Good evening. Planning Board is now in session. First item on the agenda is a continued public hearing, Ten Turnpike Road, major site plan approval, and a continued public hearing, Ten Turnpike Road, lower impact development, special permit. These public hearings have been continued from February 11th, February 25th, March 11th, and April 8th. I will ask the town planner to give us an update on where we are with these public hearings.
Sorry. Since the last planning board meeting on April 8th, we received a third submission from DeVellis Ryan and the applicant's team with plans dated March 26, 2019, and an updated stormwater report dated April 4th. This submission was also forwarded to Fasun O'Neil, the town's reviewing consultant, who provided follow-up review comments dated April 22nd. There were approximately, one, two, three, four, or five remaining review comments, primarily comments that were at the discretion of the planning board to answer and address. We did not receive any additional comments from town departments. And that brings us to this evening. I prepared a draft decision for major site plan approval and provided it to the applicant team today, mid-afternoon, maybe early afternoon, so they may not have had a chance to fully review that. And in the decision, I included all the conditions that I could come up with that would also cover the special permit for the lower impact development. So you'll see, it's a full list of conditions, and they can be separated out, or left in both, or whatever the board decides and is agreed to. And I've included a printout in your packet for review. And that's where we are this evening. I believe Mr. DeVellis is here with the owner, Raj Mahorta, and the architect is here as well.
Good evening.
Evening.
You're on. You need a microphone. Did you want to set up the tripod for your...
Uh, you want to just pull it out? Is this on automatically?
Sometimes.
Sometimes. Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and...
I guess it's on, yeah?
Yeah, great. Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Again, for the record, my name is Jim DeVellis, I'm the professional civil engineer working on this project, and Raj Mahaltra from REIM Corporation, my client is here, and then Christina Walsh from Doug and Nino and Associates Architects. So basically, it's been a long history of submissions and review, and what Ms. Quinn was saying is, we went through a process, we submitted plans, very minor detailed changes from the last, after the last presentation that we had to you, back to Fasun O'Neil, even though there were minor comments, it was a full set. And I termed what we received back was a clean engineering letter. There are some comments addressed to the board, such like a SWIP has to be done, and plans recorded, and things like that. So we take no objections to the last set of comments that they have that really don't affect the plans, it's more of your review of it. So we're here in front of you tonight for two, two things. One is the site plan approval, and the other one is the low impact development. Now, the site plan approval, from my understanding, requires a certain number of members to vote on it. And then the LID, because it's a special permit, you need a supermajority, you need four members. So we came in here this evening to take the LID away from tonight, because you don't have the quorum for that, correct? So we're going to ask for the continuance of that?
I believe that if the member is not here, he can invoke Mullins' rule, so that you could possibly discuss the LID if you chose to, and then the planning board member who attends at the next meeting can get up to speed, because he hasn't missed any prior meetings, just for the record.
Okay, all right. So I, coming in here, I thought Peter Barberi, who's been representing us, is not here tonight, and then the other attorney is not here tonight. I didn't think we'd be talking about the LID. We're going to separate the two. That's from the emails, that's what we were expecting, but so be it.
It's up to, it's up to you how you want to do it, but if there's issues with the, with the special permit and the LID, and you don't want to talk about it tonight, and you're going to push it into one meeting, May 13th?
Yeah, so the LID would continue.
If it doesn't get resolved on May 13th, then the board either denies the permit...
Correct.
Or you start all over again.
Correct, for the LID.
Yes.
Understood. So that's from the emails going back, that's what I expected tonight, because I thought the correspondence was, we couldn't talk about the LID, but we could talk about site plan approval.
Uh, no.
Okay.
That's probably a little misunderstanding.
Okay.
When I got your email this afternoon, actually about 6:30 or so, that's when I realized you might not be coming tonight. But previous to that, I think Peter understood probably, and that's maybe why that both could be discussed tonight, because I did mention the Mullins' rule to him as well. But like Don said, it's up to you. It would just be helpful if you got some of those issues vetted.
Okay, fair enough.
And you could always pass that information on.
So we continue it to the next meeting, but have this, have this, this full meeting on both of these tonight? Yeah, okay, fair enough. So I don't have presentat, I can certainly go through the sets, but we've all done it before. So if there's any questions you have from the Fasun O'Neil letter, or do you want me to go through the plans again?
We're going to go through the Fasun O'Neil letter.
Okay.
But why don't you, for the sake of the people in the room and on TV, just quickly do an overview of the pro, of the proposed project, where it's located, what's there now, and what you're planning to do.
So this is the, just a colored rendering of the site plans that have been presented. Route 9, Turnpike Road going this way, going towards Framingham, the town line is further up there. So this colored area represents about six acres. From here back, we're not doing anything, there's some existing cell towers in here, just shaded differently so you can see them, but we're not doing anything there. So the existing building is this rectangle. What we're doing is, we're adding an addition here, and a small addition here. The access to Route 9 would still be coming off of here. You'd actually come into the site, go through the building, the doors open automatically with a code, you come in, you go up and down the elevators, you drive back out, and you go out that way. There's a small office area here, you'd come in and park, go into the office, park and then leave. Or if you wanted to come back, there's some loading here, loading here, and then you'd come back out there. So some of the changes that we had from the beginning to where we are right now, the majority of it, let me back up a little bit, we went through the Conservation Commission, they were very amenable to the project. We have an underground septic system here, we moved it a little bit further away, maintaining that stormwater detention basin. What happens now, a lot of the discussion was the LID and the stormwater management. If you go out there today, it's a dilapidated building, the site is in disrepair, and there's no stormwater controls. What we've done is added a detention basin over here, came in front of the board, Conservation and the Planning Board, and our presentation was, it's a redevelopment, we're going to make it a lot better, and we did stormwater management, water quality, we're completely capturing all of the storms down here, 98% of it is going into the ground, where everything just goes off right now. So during that process, and it was a healthy discussion, just focusing on the front three acres, what we did is, we enhanced this, we changed all the landscaping to be native indigenous, and we added, we removed a lot of the pavement that was here. The discussion was, even though you're decreasing the runoff and increasing the water enhancement, could you do a better job? So we pulled this away, and the roof runoff that comes off in the back goes along a swale, a stone channel, and then a vegetated swale here, vegetated swale here, and then an additional rain garden, which is above and beyond what's required. We changed all of the structures, even though it's a redevelopment, to storm scepters, we meet the TSS removal, we increased the volume substantially into the ground rather than runoff, and we've provided a lot of the LID, we have rain barrels, we have well-oversized detention basins, all of this. And we actually, through that last exercise, reduced the amount of impervious surface from pre to post to less than what's there now. So it's a substantial benefit to what's there now. And the only real comments that were remaining from Fasun O'Neil, there was a couple light poles here, even though they were like .1, we added these buffers which aren't there currently, we took the light poles and moved them to this side, so there's zero, we put shields on them, so there's no spill whatsoever on there. And then we, basically, a lot of the underground drainage, they wanted additional inverts and things like that, but nothing that changed on the plans. It did change on the report. If you look at the stormwater report, we've got operation and maintenance, we've got everything on there that I think they're happy with now. And as far as the building, the only thing that really changed on the building was, initially, we came in here with two signs, we removed it, and we only have one sign now. Everything conforms to the zoning, we're not asking for any special considerations or variances. So that's one thing that has stayed pretty consistent from beginning to end on the project. So we're very happy, we're grateful for the back and forth. It has taken a considerable amount of time through the boards. Zoning board signed off on it, Conservation has signed off, but they wanted to wait till you guys were finished. And we got a sign off from the Board of Health as well for the septic system.
So let's go through the letter. Fasun O'Neil is our consultant, and they have reviewed the latest edition of the submittal, and their letter is dated April 22nd. And they have just a few comments. The lower impact development, section 174-13.3J3, the applicant shall file a permit, the permit, prior to the start of construction at the Registry of Deeds, and you've agreed to that.
Correct.
The next item was, at the completion of the project, as-built record drawings shall be provided, and you've agreed to that.
Correct.
Next item has to do with the LID, the one-foot contentious?
Yeah, the survey provided one-foot, yeah, it should say contours, one-foot contentious contours.
Yeah.
And because of all the ledge out there and the size of it, the surveyor did two-foot, and then we looked at some of the applications that were in before us, and we thought two-foot was fine. And then, that was one of the first comments we had six months ago, that they were okay with that.
So it's up to the board to not agree with that, or agree to waive that and accept the two feet. We'll take that action before we finish tonight. And then the next item, stormwater management report and LID report, is outlined within the provided emergency response plan and LID application, to ensure that the project meets the requirements outlined within the regulations, a stormwater pollution prevention plan must be provided prior to the beginning of construction. You've agreed to that.
Yep. And just for clarity, we do one anyways, it's a federal requirement, this just gives you the ability to review it as well, and we're okay with that?
Then they refer to their review and the future review, or the continued review of the stormwater system, disposal system, and the continued review by the Salpro Public Health, Department of Public Health. So let's, I'll open up to the board directly dealing with the waiver of the one-foot contentious contours.
I'm in favor of waiving the one-foot requirement, I think that's overkill, and we've waived it on most that I can remember.
Yeah, it's in the, it's in the code, we've kept it in the code, because there are some sites that are, have really tricky and steep contours, where the one-foot is really essential and would be able to require it. But as you stated, it's, doesn't really apply that much to this site. Mrs. Latrell?
I don't believe it's contentious, I would agree to waive them.
So, Mr. Jenks, a motion to waive?
Mr. Chairman, I move that we waive the one-foot contour requirement and allow showing of two-foot contours.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded, any discussion? All in favor? Okay, so that's been waived. That pretty much takes care of Fasun O'Neil. Now, the way we left it, I think, at our last meeting relative to the LID, was, we were targeting the, is it three acres in the back?
Correct, yep.
And asking for you to identify how much of that would remain as open space. Have you done that?
We talked about that, and I, again, I apologize, we talked about it extensively, the two attorneys who didn't come tonight, because they didn't think the LID was going to be discussed, and we just had that discussion a few minutes ago. Generally speaking, and there's reasons behind it, but to give up three acres or a substantial portion is something that the applicant was not ready to do, with all due respect. And some of the reasons were because, and when we looked at this site, and it kind of, what we had talked about last time, there's been a tremendous amount of effort and cost and design going into, not going into that three acres, and maintaining the existing building, and building into it to save trees, to save all of that stuff. And through this process, we, very seldom do you see the pavement reduced below existing. So between all of the extensive stormwater mitigation that we've done, reducing the pavement, adding the LID to swales, and then renovating a building rather than knocking it down, the applicant, and I agree, and the project team agreed, that that was something that was above and beyond, with the understanding that you have LID with all the checklist of things that you could do. If that three acres was taken away for future development, even though there's no future development, it's above and beyond, I think, what our responsibility would be. And I say that respectfully, that we don't take it lightly, there was a lot of discussion on that topic. And I think we've met all of the LID requirements without giving up half of the property.
Well, I don't think, when we left it the last time, we were asking for the whole... Well, I don't think, when we left it the last time, we were asking for the whole green space to remain untouched. I think we asked you to come back and tell us how much of it you could declare to be permanent open space. So is it exactly three acres?
I'd have to, if it's not, it's within a few tenths?
Yep. You need the microphone.
My name is Raj, it's not exactly three acres, when you say three acres and three acres, we say approximately, because part of that top three acres has some towers on them, so some of the space is taken by that area, so it's not exactly three acres.
So it's probably around a hundred thousand square feet?
Yeah, I would say, I've had to guess it, looks reasonable.
It's like two and a half acres.
Mm-hmm, yes.
So we want you to come back and say, of the hundred thousand square feet, we'll commit to keeping ninety-eight thousand as green space, or fifty thousand, or whatever you think is appropriate to protect your interests, but also to be as fully compliant with the lid as possible. I'll open it up to the board and get their comments, those are mine.
Okay.
Mr. Jenks?
There's part of me that, we've asked developers to give up land for open space. I think that occurs mostly in residential developments, subdivisions. This would be open space that doesn't have any public access. I'd pretty much go with whatever they think they can offer, and I'm, public space, open spaces is very nice, and there are a lot of good reasons for it, but it is a penalty to the developer to, at this point, say, we'll never do anything on that land. And I don't think this would be such a hot addition to the town's open space that that should be a requirement.
I would say, your lid report still says that half the site is being preserved, and the new supplement that was submitted on April tenth said, listed two acres of protected open space.
I think what, we're being honest in the report, when you look at it and you go through all the requirements, the guidelines tell you to reduce tree removal, to maintain limits of pavement, to respect X, Y, and Z. So we went through the thing, and when it says limit tree removal, we're saying, we're working within the existing pavement and decreasing it, and because of that, we're not going into that area. But in no shape or form are we saying, because we're not going into that area, that two acres of that three acres will be given up for open space. Because I don't know what tomorrow brings, and the owner doesn't either, so I was just listing a fact, because it lists, what are you doing?
Well, it lists protected open space, two acres, and that has a definition, protected open space. Protected open space by definition isn't just land left.
Okay.
Temporarily undeveloped.
It says, we're proposing protected open space?
Yes.
Okay, so I think we went through that at the last meeting, and if it was an error, we said we were going to take that out if...
Well, this is the new supplement from April tenth.
Oh, that's the original application form.
So there are some things that were changed on here from the original lid report.
I think, and I apologize, what, I was out of the country for the last, at the last meeting, and I think what happened was, we submitted, because there were such minor changes to Fasson O'Neil, a supplement, and then we were asked to provide new documents for everything. So we printed all new plans, all new reports and everything, nothing really changed in it, I think that was just missed from the original application. But we talked about, it wasn't in the intent to put a condition on there, that three acres, even though it's being noted as we're not removing the trees, that it would stay in perpetuity, or a portion of it, for this application. So I explained it, and I think if it was left in the application, the drainage report and the LID reports that was submitted after that was all removed, so I apologize if that's still in the original application from, I forget the date, but that was when it was first submitted.
In my mind, I think all of those things should be consistent with the submission, not say that we're protecting two acres and then not have that followed through on.
Yeah, and again, I just, when it was submitted, our presentation was, we went through it, and it said, do this, do that, and we went through the checklist, and it says, don't disturb if you're not, and I said, we're not disturbing it. So I think that's the intent of that wordage.
Okay. Onto my next argument. The large trees in the front of the property are all being removed?
Um...
The large trees that are there presently?
Yes, right in the middle, right in front of the, there's a pine tree and things, as you commit, there's a circle inside there.
But along Route nine?
But yeah, within the limits between the proposed parking in the roadway, that area has to be dug out for stormwater detention.
So our landscaping bylaw says that no existing tree, six caliper or greater, or dense hedge grove shall be removed. So I would think that as mitigation, some open space wouldn't be out of the question. Additionally, it calls for one tree per twenty linear feet, and there are four trees there, and it's two hundred linear feet, so that, my math isn't great, but that's more than four. So additionally, if we're going to be satisfied with the four trees, I would say it would be warranted to protect some of that back areas, open spaces mitigation.
We can count that up, but you see in the landscaping plan, all of those trees are proposed that are not there now, so we are taking...
Well, as a buffer along Route nine, it's one tree per two hundred linear feet. I mean, one per twenty linear feet on Route nine.
One tree proposed per twenty linear feet.
Well, that's the requirement of our bylaw.
I would ask, I guess, I can measure it, but our landscape architect looked at that, and you see the four trees that are there. Maybe we need to add a fifth one, but I think that was the intent.
Well, I would just, those trees that are there are huge and provide a very good So I would encourage some of that back lot to be preserved as open space.
Thank you.
So to be clear, we're not asking for the whole three acres, two acres. We want you to come back and say, let's see, take into account what was said here tonight, take into account maybe what you think you may be able to do in the future on that site, and leave the rest of it.
Whenever we have a development update, it'll conform to all the open space requirements. We have to follow that, and the total amount of construction we can do is based on the total amount we've already built out, so I think so there'll be substantial open space left, even by the present bylaws, okay? It's not that we'll be able to just build out completely over there, it'll be a very small percentage that'll be built out, okay? But the problem is that we, it's in the future, so we have not looked into that, and who knows, because we are considering mostly on the Route nine area, right now it's a flat area, up there is thirty feet high, and I cannot envision right now what the purpose would be, if there's any. But if I sell the property, I don't want to take away the value of the property, just because I've said something right now. But if you have, if you think there's a hundred thousand square feet, that's what I'm guessing, a hundred thousand square feet, what if we decide on one-fourth of that being open space just to, so that it works for everybody, okay, on that area, if that helps, okay? Because I cannot envision right now, I'm just saying off my cuff now, as to what may be reasonable, okay?
So when you come back, with that one-fourth, and then having looked at the contours, the locations of the ledge, the angles, you'd be able to identify if that's the way you want to do it, if you want to commit to a number, a percentage, we could do it that way. Or you could actually have a plan that would show the portion of the green space that's there now, that you would identify as not being touched in the future, and having it add up to that twenty-five percent.
So, do you want the...
We just need something in the record that everyone will understand as to what the board approved, and what your rights are, and what your rights are now, and what your rights will be going forward if you decide to develop the site. And then if, like you said, if you were to sell it, the buyer would have an idea as to what the options are.
Okay.
The board needs to know what we're approving.
Right. No, I gave you a number, just without thinking too hard on it, but I think that could be reasonable, that's why I gave that number. I don't know the detail as to which section it'll be, obviously, there has to be some engineering done on that one, okay?
So when you come back on May thirteenth, you'll have it all wrapped up? You'll have it in writing, and/or on a plan that the board can look at, and decide if it's adequate, and take a vote?
And maybe it'll help us if you have any ideas of area, or anything like that, or you want to...
I don't think you want to ask us, because our number's up around a hundred thousand.
Okay, okay, that's fine. Okay.
Good to know. One question on that, if I look at the plan, I mean, if we wanted to develop up to the property line, we certainly could, is this an area that you would consider? I mean, we were asked to pull it back, which we did already, but with that area there, I mean, I don't know if it's a good area for, to give up, because it's really the only flat area on the site, but you're basically looking at whatever areas left over that we're not developing now, whether it's in the back or on the sides?
We'll leave that up to you.
Okay.
You know, you do have neighbors in that neighborhood, and, you know, sometimes the green space reflects sensitivity to the neighbors also.
Okay. Thank you.
So any more on the lid? I'll open it up to the public to speak relative to the lower impact development special permit, which we were in the middle of that public hearing, and we'll have to continue that. Did you want to speak, Freddie?
Hi, Freddie Gillespie, Chair of the Open Space Preservation Commission, and first I'd like to thank the project proponent for being so responsive to the native plant discussion we had in the past, and the changes to the landscape plan. There were a couple of, and I apologize, we've been busy and didn't get a letter in, a couple of remaining comments on the grass is only fifty percent native, and I needed to research because I know that's what is done by New England Wetland Plants, which is one of the companies that provides these type of planting, so I wanted to make sure there was not a good reason not to have it be a hundred percent native. But the other issue we noted was that the size of the plants on the landscape plan were less than what is required in the code, and that the plants are all available in that size, except for the low bush blueberry, which I think don't get as big as they're required, so you're not going to be able to get them that size, so it would seem, if you can follow along, there's a requirement for a certain sized shrub, and the shrub doesn't grow that big, so they can't require you to have that size. But the rest of the shrubs can be at these sizes in the code recommendations, and I don't have the numbers in front of me, but I know at least that New England Wetland Plants are available in the larger size, and they're not that much more money, so shouldn't be that hard to come up with the required. I did want to, well, in saying that, overall, the landscape plan is fantastic and well-done, so these are just two small issues. But I did want to, for the people in the room who kind of know we're open space, we did not bring up that some of this industrial redevelopment project should be open space, that was proposed by the proponent in your lid application, and that's where that conversation's coming from. Being an open space commissioner, of course, we'd love to see more land, even if there's not public access, there's value, green space, resiliency, you know, and for water resources, so that's always something we'd like to see. And then finally, I'd like to just mention that a future presentation you're having tonight, you may want to be looking at what kind of lighting you're going to put in the permit for the, I'm not going to speak to that, but you're getting a presentation, and there's different types of LED lighting, and some is better than others, and so hoping that the Planning Board will consider that in your permitting when, after you see that presentation. So thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else on the lid? Let's move on to the site plan. So is it, there's three members here tonight, is it your desire to have the board, if possible, vote on the site plan tonight? We sent you a draft decision which lists the conditions, and that was sent to you this afternoon, so if you had enough time to look at that.
Yeah, so...
So one of your options is, regardless of what you say, we're going to go through the site plan tonight, we'll go through it again. One of your options is to ask the board to vote on the site plan tonight with three Another option would be to, we go through the site plan again and not have the board vote with three members, but vote on May thirteenth, after you've had more time, you and your attorneys have had more time to look at the conditions, and some of the conditions that we put in there pertain to the open space, so some of those would be, I'm not sure how we'd deal with those with respect to the site plan conditions. Another option would be for you to ask the board to vote tonight, and then take a chance that the board would... and then take a chance that the board would say that we don't have enough information and possibly vote on a decision that would be, that would have more conditions to cover those still-open items. So if you want to take a minute to think about it.
Yeah, if I could just, let me talk to my client for half a minute.
So the reason I'm saying all this is, first of all, because you should understand what your options are. But we've also had proponents come in for site plan, and we've had three members or we've had four. And the proponent says, no, I'd rather get all five or I'd rather get all four. It strengthens the, you know, the approval. And I'm not sure if that's related to financing or just making them feel good. So yeah, go ahead, take a few minutes and.
So the next meeting would be on the thirteenth. So with the two applications in front of you, one needs three out of the five, the other needs four out of the five because it's a special permit? I guess that's where my confusion is. Could we vote tonight with the three members without the LID stuff and then vote next week on the thirteenth for the LID? Because we can't, we physically cannot do that tonight. Is that what you're saying?
You need quorum of three, a majority of planning board members for the site plan approval, which you have tonight.
Okay.
For the lid, special permit requires a quorum of four out of five, and all four have to vote to approve.
Okay. So the condition, the stuff that we're discussing tonight that may be forthcoming is really the open space, right? The additional open space. Everything else seems pretty minor.
If you look at the draft decision.
Yeah, we're comfortable with the draft decision with the exception of taking out the LID stuff. I think that was our issue tonight. Like, there's a statement in here that no future development, things like that. If we could take out the LID stuff, there's nothing in this that is worrisome from our perspective.
I think we'd have to be clear on what you're considering the LID conditions.
Okay.
Because I did lump them all together, and sometimes we put all in both decisions.
Okay. I can just go through them real quick if it jumps out. On item paragraph two, it says, "The project also requires a special permit from the low-impact development." And that's just a statement, but that's fine.
I'm sorry, go back to that one again.
On procedural history, it says, "The project also requires a special permit for low-impact development." So that is a statement that could be in the site plan approval, so that's fine.
That's just outlining that someone, when they go look for a site plan, when they look for this decision in the future, they go look for a lid as well.
Okay. Number nine, it says, "The following correspondence was received during the project review." It says, "Town Council, Aldo Cipriano Review Letter Dated Blank of Decision Drafts." We don't have any, we don't have that.
No, what happens typically is, once the decisions are drafted and been vetted from your team and from the planning board members' requirements, and there's a final draft, we typically send it to town council for final review.
Okay.
And then it gets returned, and if there's any changes, they're usually just minor.
Okay. So that, where it's not done yet, couldn't be in this decision, right?
I wouldn't think so. I think what gets predominantly, it's the waivers and the conditions that set the stage of the decision.
Okay.
These other items are like historical things that happen during the review. So if that doesn't happen, it gets taken out. But if it does happen, it stays in there.
Okay, all right. On page three of seven, on the waiver request, that's specific for LID. The LID is the one-foot contours. So even though the planning board's fine with it, that's not site plan approval, that's LID?
Yeah, I would take those waivers and put it into the lid.
Yeah, so those two, and then the waiver from the low-impact development.
You'd have to confirm that the second waiver request is, in fact, what you were asking. I left that in there as a placeholder because I didn't receive a list of waiver requests.
So the, you're stating that the waiver request for use of rain gardens, I didn't see that as a.
Roof gardens.
Oh, roof gardens, I'm sorry. But the way the LID is drafted, it says, you know, roof gardens, rain barrels, swales.
Yeah.
Vegetated, things like that.
There's a list of techniques and usually.
So if you don't do all of them, you wouldn't necessarily ask for a waiver for the one or two that you didn't do?
We have been.
Oh, you have been, okay.
Yeah. If I'm not mistaken, I think to be very clear, if there are items you're not including, we just spell them out in the same paragraph if it's roof gardens.
Okay.
Or whatever you're not including.
Okay, so that would, that would still be under the LID approval?
Yeah.
Okay. The one that was, obviously, number five.
Yeah, hold on a second.
Sure, I'm sorry.
We're going to put this up so people can see what we're talking about.
So we're up to this point in waiver requests. Everything prior to this is usually standard.
Can you all read that? You can. Oh, okay. You're on.
So. On page five, number five, it says, "The owner of the property shall set aside X acres." So obviously, that's an LID item. Number nine talks about the special permit for low-impact development, which is fine. It'll be done, but it's an LID item.
I usually carry that in both. It doesn't have to be, but I just like to be real clear of what has to be recorded.
Oh, yeah, so I think the decision and the plans will be recorded for the site plan and the LID, but it's two separate. So I'm saying, so if this approval is just for the site plan, then it would say, "The site plan for, including the planting plan, shall be recorded with the registry of deeds."
Yeah, but usually I keep both of them in both decisions so that it's clear what was recorded or what is required to be because it often gets confusing afterwards. So I just list them both together so you don't have to jump back and forth.
So if the board voted tonight, I'm going to let you continue through this, but if, just so you know, sometimes this decision is signed the next day by the chairman if it's reviewed for something simple. But most of the time, it takes a couple of weeks before we finalize the language, have the town council take a look at it, and then sign it and get it to you. And that starts the twenty-day appeal period. So when the town planner says, she usually lists these in both decisions, we'll be understanding tonight that if you do ask us to vote on the site plan, that these items that we're going through are not part of the vote. But if after we get through and satisfy these items through the lid, that they will reappear in the site plan decision document.
Correct.
As a duplication of the lid so that it's more administrative.
I understand.
But you need to understand that what we're voting on tonight may exclude these items, but the decision document would include them.
Include it, yep. And there's only, otherwise I just can't find it right now, but I thought there was a paragraph in there that said there will be no more.
Number seventeen?
The no further subdivision?
Oh, I'm sorry, I missed the, yeah, last page. "No further subdivision or development of the parcel shall be allowed." That is something that if ten years from now, an applicant wants to just come in and do a subdivision, knock down the building and do something else, this would restrict that. And that's one thing that the attorneys would kind of jumped on and said. If there's a subdivision forthcoming, it would go through that same process. It would come in front of the planning board, conservation board of health. But to restrict any future development in perpetuity is something that would not be. I don't know how that, why that was in there.
That's why I have it highlighted as a condition that I wasn't a hundred percent sure how the planning board felt about that. It was a carryover from a prior project with similar characteristics. So I put it on the table so that they could decide if they want to include that and then if you agree.
Okay, thank you.
So you're saying that you don't agree with number seventeen?
We can't agree with that, just, we don't know what the future holds. But if there is further development or further subdivision, it would come back in front of the town. But this statement doesn't allow that to ever happen.
Let me ask the board how they feel about number seventeen. Mr. Jenks?
I would not include that.
Mrs. Latrell? Number seventeen.
I could be convinced to leave that out.
I'm convinced to leave it out.
Thank you.
Thank you.
What else?
I think that's basically anything referenced in the LID, but other than that, I think that's what we had talked about.
I just want to point out that there are some highlighted items which I wanted the board to just respond to if it was more appropriate to be prior to a certificate of occupancy or a building permit application, just timing-wise. And then on number fourteen, regarding the SWIP, it says, "Prior to constru," "And upon transfer of ownership, the O and M plan must be signed by owners and submitted to the planning board." In some instances, there were projects that the proponent was potentially selling the property once he got the permitting to another developer. So we carried that in there just to cover it in case it is sold, that we're still protected by who would be maintaining the stormwater. And then I also had the open space, I mean, the landscaping comments from Open Space Preservation Commission highlighted just to make sure Open Space knew that they were being included and if there was anything that should be added or taken out. But it was based on the comment letter we received from Open Space. So that's why that landscaping section is highlighted.
Yeah, so with respect to the landscaping, there's quite a number of items, no invasive mowing twice a year. All those are acceptable. If we miss something on the landscaping plan, that does a caliper. I thought we had gotten all the calipers correct. And by chance, if there's things that you can't buy that's required, maybe that's why it's a smaller caliper. But our intent is to meet the bylaw for all of the landscaping. And all of this stuff is very detailed in the operation and maintenance plan of maintenance and no fertilizers and all that stuff. So whatever comments that we just heard are acceptable to us on the landscaping.
Mrs. Latrell?
I have additional comments on the landscaping plan when.
Yeah, I think we're at the point where you were going to take a time out and discuss what you wanted us to do tonight?
If, we can do that, but if it's a big issue, then that would influence us, I guess.
Okay, we'll go into that then. Mrs. Latrell?
I think it's just detail things. There are things on the legend. The numbers don't match. They don't match what's shown on the plans. There are things listed on the plans that don't show up in the legend. There's something listed in the legend that's listed as two different types of plants, as well as the shrubs aren't the size required in the bylaw.
Okay, I apologize. My landscape architect is not here tonight. She spent a lot of time on this, and I'm surprised if there's a mismatch. If it's significant and it's going to cost us a positive vote, then I would say we'll continue it to the next meeting. If it's small details and there's a condition that will meet their requirements. But this has been back and forth with the open space and fine-tuned. So I haven't seen any of those comments till tonight, but I know we can certainly address, if it's a legend thing versus on the, if it's labeled one thing on the legend and called out on the plan differently.
Yeah, and the numbers in the legend are, don't add up to what the plantings in the plan are.
So if the legend says six and the plan shows twenty, then the plan would supersede it?
But they should, it should equal.
It should, and I apologize. There was a tremendous amount of time going back and forth and revising it. If there's something missed, we'll certainly pick up on it. But what we're showing on the plan, if you're seeing six trees there, the plan dictates it. If the legend shows four or the legend shows eight, the plan is what we're proposing. So again, if it's a sticking point that it's going to cost us a positive vote for the entire project, I would say we'll hold back and address it. If it's a detail that we can address, then the condition would be to match the plan with the legend. And I apologize for that. I just haven't heard that comment until just now.
Also, I'd like to see a note added on the landscape plan that the species shall be provided as specified, substitution not permitted unless approved by the town planner and landscape architect.
That's fine. Yeah, we typically have construction administration services where we sign off at the end. And if it's not, we can't sign off on it unless the plans meet with what was approved. So if you want to add a different note on that, that's fine.
All right. So that's what I had, just, I don't know, inconsistencies in the plan.
Thank you. Sorry, I apologize for that.
Well, just, yes.
Okay.
Yeah. So we'll take a two-minute recess, Mr. Jenks?
Mr. Chairman, I move we take a two-minute recess.
Second.
Motion's been made in second. Any discussion, hearing that all in favor? Planning Board is back in session after a two-minute recess. Jim?
Sure, thank you, um, and thank you for the consideration. Without the attorneys here and, and just as a engineer, I found out long ago not to make that commitment. So, uh, we discussed it outside and if Raj could, uh, address the board with that answer.
Sure.
Hi, my name is Raj. I have to look from the business point of view. We have spent a lot of time, uh, on getting approval of this one and it has put a lot of strain on me, to tell you the truth, because I want to go forward. But I have to let you know that the intent is not to go against the town, to work with the town. So if there are small issues, we can all resolve them. So I would like you to vote, uh, on the, on the, on the, um, on the, on the site plan. And, um, but I would like you to appreciate that we will be working with the town if there are issues, uh, not that, uh, we would do, do things against, not to, to, not make the town happy rather than unhappy. And you can look at my other, um, projects, they have been fairly, uh, successful and we have always worked with the town, okay? But I'm a small operator, so th- this is a lot of stress on me, the, the number of times if they come here, gone into now hundreds of thousands of dollars, okay? Uh, we have, uh, at risk right now, okay? And, uh, I have to somehow get it approved, okay?
So you want us to vote tonight?
Yes, please.
Okay. There's one item that's, uh, open also that we didn't go over and it says here, um, it's number 20. Prior to the certificate of occupancy, a description of hours of operation and facility access. This is a kind of a leftover comment from, uh, another site plan. This is a single, uh, owner, a single entity, but it's open essentially to hundreds of people. So have you told us what the hours of operation are?
I think we talked about it at, uh, one of the early meetings, but it's probably best served by Ra- Raj answering that.
The normal, uh, for about 99% of people, the hours are from 5:00 AM to 10:00 PM. The office is open from around 8:30 to 6:00 PM. And the, but people who go in and out of the building, they all have their, uh, personal code. So it's not open to public, it's only open to tenants. And we have a lot of, there are some units which are on the outside, maybe six or seven units, which are on the outside, uh, so they don't have to go inside the building. And those people can have longer access hours. Uh, but the 99% people have, uh, the access hours adjusted and, uh, it's a controlled access to the building. It's not anybody, nobody from outside can enter the building.
When you say 5:00 AM to 10:00 PM, how are you able to, you're saying that their access code won't work?
Yes, access code, it's, it's, it's a, it's a high-tech type, so you can control that. Because everybody has their own perk and we can assign a, a time to actually each person, okay? So, it's a little sophisticated, uh, type of application they have.
So unless somebody asks for something special, their access code will not work after 10:00 PM and before 5:00 AM?
Yes.
Seven days a week?
Pardon? Seven days a week, yes. But the, there are hundreds of people which access self-storage. Self-storage is a very, uh, light traffic type of business and...
No, but you have, how many storage units do you have?
So this will have about 800, but the, the rule of thumb is one person per hundred per hour. So if the 800, that's eight people per hour. And so if you multiply by 10, that means 80 people in a whole day, okay? So it's, it's very low traffic type of business and most of these people come on weekends. People don't normally come on the weekdays, uh, and, uh, so that's why the 10:00 PM time is because people who go to work, they have some, some time for them to come and visit. Because most, 70% of people are homeowners who come, come there. And, uh, so they need some time after office hours to come. So that's why this 10:00 PM is there and the 5:00 AM is there, okay?
Okay. You have that, we have that?
And the office was, um, 8:30 to 6:00 PM? Not 6:30, 8 to, 8:30 to 6:00 PM, seven days a week.
Weekend hour.
Only weekend for the office?
Weekend hours are different. The, the are weekday hours, weekend hours are shorter hours.
For the office?
Office also shorter, um. See, the thing is, every office is a function of the, how competitive the area is. So we conform to the competition in that area. So I would say, um, Saturday is about 9:00 to 5:00, 9:00 AM to 5:00 PM. And Sunday is, uh, maybe noon to 5:00 PM, okay?
So the 8:30 to 6:00 is Monday through Friday?
8:30 to Monday through Friday, yes.
Office hours, approximately, okay.
You sure now? Because it's going to be written down.
I'm reasonably sure. I have been doing this since 1985. Things have changed over the years, okay? But, uh, things do change, so depending on what the competition is doing in the area. You have, U-Haul over there too, right? You approved U-Haul, they must be having similar hours as us, okay?
No, we want to take, we want to accommodate your needs, but we want to make sure that it's captured so that you're, you're entitled to those hours and the neighbors know that you can have those hours.
The reason we have these, because time can change, business model can change over years, okay? But right now, the model is because you don't want to have more than 40 hours per person, employee. So that's why they have this limitation of 8:30 or, it's not 6 o'clock. Ideally, one would like to have 6, but it'll be too many hours for payroll. So there's some reasons why we do these certain things, but as of right now, that's what the guideline is, okay?
Okay, thank you. So, um, the proponent wants the planning board to vote tonight. Before we do that, we open it up to the public for any questions or comments. And then at the end of that part of it, we entertain a motion to close the public hearing, after which there can be no more information provided, uh, beyond what we, uh, had agreed to as far as missing or incomplete information that would be captured with the lid. So, um, anymore, yes, Mrs. Latrell.
I have a question. Do, I don't remember what the hours for U-Haul were, but I know that the hours for the storage next door are 7:00 A to 7:00 P, Monday through Saturday and noon to 7:00 PM on Sunday.
The, next door self-storage is a different type of self-storage, it's not an indoor, it's, uh, what we call Generation One self-storage opener. This is, uh, more of the fifth generation self-storage, everything is indoors. So they are set up differently, completely. Here you have to, it's, it's a two different type of self-storage completely. So you really can't compare the, that one because that is, actually it's open to public all the time, actually. Anybody can go in and go to the unit, uh, in that self-storage there, okay? The, the, and the, and the one behind us, right? Yes, that, that's a first generation self, self-storage. Actually, they don't even build them anymore, okay? So the whole operation is set up very differently. They don't have any climate control, they don't have anything, okay?
Do we know what the hours for U-Haul were?
I think the way we handled that, I know you're asking to, to like compare it, but I think what we did was we asked U-Haul what they wanted and if that was okay with the neighbors and us, then we accommodated their, uh, desires and we're doing the same thing here tonight. If this proponent wants to be opened different times than U-Haul and, unless that's a problem to us or the neighbors, then we will accommodate that. I think that's our approach.
Okay, thank you.
So open it up to the public. Any questions or comments on, um, 10 Turnpike Storage Facility? Seeing none, uh, entertain a motion to close the public hearing. Mr. Jenks.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we close the public hearing on the site plan approval for 10 Turnpike Road All-American Self-Storage Facility.
Second.
Motion's been made in second. Any discussion? All in favor? Okay, the public hearing is closed for the, um, the site plan. Let's, um, before we, uh, go to the, uh, the vote, let's go back to the lower impact development, uh, special permit public hearing. That, um... That approval period ends on May 3rd. So in order to make sure that what we're doing relative to the site plan and connecting it to the lid, we need to first keep the lid public hearing alive, keep that process alive. And the way to do that is to extend the approval period beyond May 13th, which would be, I think, is it May 18th? May 17th. It's usually the Friday after the Monday that we continue the public hearing, just in case something happens and we have to reschedule it. We would still have time to do it that week.
Acceptable.
So what we have is a form here. No, we'll fix it, we'll fix it, because we're going to sign this. So what we would do is continue the public hearing for the lid to 7:00 p.m. on May 13th.
May 17th?
May 13th, it's the Monday.
Okay, yep.
And then the approval period, it'll be separate or combined vote, the approval period would then go to close the business on the 17th.
Okay, fair enough.
And you agreed to that?
Agreed, yeah.
We have to change something on this, so don't go away. Mr. Jenks? This would be a motion to extend the approval period. And once that's accomplished, then we're allowed to continue the public hearing to a point before that.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we extend the approval period for 10 Turnpike Road All-American Self-Storage Facility lid special permit to May 17th. Close the business? What business? Town Hall closes at noon? To noon on May 17th.
Second.
Motion's been made in seconded, any discussion? All in favor? Okay, we've continued the approval period to the 17th. Mr. Jenks?
Mr. Chairman, I move that we continue the public hearing for the LID special permit for 10 Turnpike Road All-American Self-Storage Facility to May 13th at 7:00 p.m.
Second.
Motion's been made in seconded, any discussion? Mrs. Latrell? Oh, okay. There is one discussion item, it's, I don't recall us ever doing this, although we may have, where we've separated the dates for action. You know, doing the site plan first and then the special permit at a later date. Usually they, they travel along at the same pace. But, you know, this is what you've asked for, and I think we're at a point where we'll see how this vote goes. And hopefully you'll come back and remember that you wanted to be good neighbors.
Mm-hmm. I appreciate it, thank you.
All in favor? Okay, site plan's approved. I'm sorry.
I'll take that.
The public hearing is continued. Now let's go back to the site plan. So we have the draft that we've gone through, the draft decision. And I guess I'll leave it up to Mr. Jenks to make the motion to approve the major site plan consistent with, or in accordance with this seven-page draft decision as discussed. Or if we feel more comfortable going into more detail, the motion can do that also. Are you comfortable with that, Jim? Mr. Jenks?
Yeah, I'm comfortable with that. We've got that well-recorded, what the comments were, and I think we're also on TV. So we know what the discussion was tonight.
So your motion is?
Mr. Chairman, I move to approve major site plan approval in accordance with the seven-page draft decision dated April 29th, 2019, subject to the discussion held during open public meeting tonight. Period.
Second.
Tommy McAuliffe would be proud of you. Those of us who remember Tom McAuliffe seconding motions, it was a classic. Motion's been made in seconded, any discussion? All in favor?
No discussion.
All in favor?
This is discussion.
Discussion, sorry.
I would feel more comfortable if we added a condition that the updated landscape plan shall be submitted to the planning board for review.
Prior to May 13th?
That would be good, is that possible?
Yeah, if there was the numbering and we can get that into you tomorrow.
Oh, okay, yeah.
So prior to May 13th?
Yes.
Any more discussion? So to be clear, this is the motion to approve the site plan. All in favor? Approved.
Thank you very much, I appreciate it.
Okay, thank you. So stick around, we're going to sign, where did it go? The extension. No. So we're going to move on to the next item, it's only going to be a minute or two.
Sure.
And we'll let our next discussion item, oh, the next one's the public safety building sign application. Does the LED lighting require a setup? So maybe we'll just where would you be setting up? Why don't you do that, set up? Take advantage of the time, and then the rest of us can feel free to speak quietly among ourselves. Okay, we're back. The form to cover those motions to continue the public hearing and the approval period, the form was just signed by the proponent. I just signed it. So now let's move on to the next agenda item, which is the public safety building application for the sign. I'll ask the town planner to tell us what this one's all about.
All right, we, about a month or so ago, we received some information from the public safety buildings architect, context architect, indicating that they had come to terms with the public safety building committee on the type of sign that is proposed at the public safety building. Put a picture of it up here. So the public safety building turns out is larger than compliant, therefore it needs a zoning board of appeals variance for the size of the sign. And when that happens, part of the process is that the applicant, which in this case is the town, has to come to the planning board and ask for a report back to the zoning board of appeals on five criteria that are outlined in the zoning code. So the building inspector commissioner, Lori Lavoli, issued a standard denial letter and indicating that they need to come here to planning board and also get a variance from the zoning board. With the planning board, it's not a public hearing, it's a discussion, because we just make a recommendation to zoning board of appeals, but the variance through the zoning board of appeals is a public hearing for this process. And what I'm just scrolling through here is the application for zoning. And then this is what the sign is proposed to look like. So the planning board, I prepare a standard memo that addresses the five criteria, and the planning board discusses it, and once they take their vote on each of those items, the form gets finalized and then gets submitted to the zoning board of appeals as part of their application process. And I don't think I have a copy of the form on line here, but you have it in your package. That's what I have.
Very good, thank you. We'll ask Mr. Jenks. Okay. And that's 1, is it 174, the section in the code?
Yes, it's the section of the code is 174-11 regarding petition for a wall sign.
And what we're looking at is exactly from the code?
Yes, the five criteria that you see are taken verbatim from the town code. It's also reiterated in the building inspector's denial letter, and I'll just show you here. She also references zoning code 174-11 DE of the zoning bylaw. You may apply for a zoning board of appeals for a variance for a sign not meeting the zoning bylaw. Please note that the additional requirement below for the planning board, the board of appeals will not act on any special permit or variance application without first receiving a written report from the planning board. Favor report of the planning board shall indicate that A, B, C, D, and E. Do you want me to read those?
Phil's going to read them.
Okay, there they are.
Or do you think Corina should read them? Yeah, go ahead, let's get started then. First one, why don't you read it, Corina?
All right, the first one is, sign scale is determined to be reasonable relation to developmental scale, viewer distance and travel speed and sign sizes on nearby structures.
And our response is yes, no, or NA, is that right?
That's correct, I'm going to go back to the form so that it's very clear. All right. So again, the sign scale is in reasonable relation to the development scale, viewer distance and travel speed and sign size on nearby structures.
My vote is yes. Jenks?
Yes.
Yes, and did we hear from Mr. Mills? He was the sign guy, did he offer any comment?
I believe that, it's my understanding that he was very pleased to see that the sign was similar to the other municipal signs in town for consistency.
Okay.
Next.
Need my glasses, sorry. Number two is, the sign size, shape, and placement serve to define or enhance architectural elements of the building, such as columns, sill lines, cornices, roof edges, and do not unreasonably interrupt, obscure, or hide them.
Yes.
NA.
Yes. Number three, the sign design is in harmony with other signage on the same or adjacent structures and provides reasonable continuity in mounting location and height proportions and materials.
Yes.
Yes.
Yes. Number four, the sign materials, colors, lettering, style, illumination, and form are reasonably compatible with the building design and neighborhood context and use.
Yes.
Yes.
...kinds of LEDs. So if we actually, I'll turn this off so we can all see now. If we, that's one of the problems with these. If we, if we actually put a graph to that, this illustrates the problem. So this is just, this is showing how much of each color is in there. High-pressure sodium, it's mostly that orange-amber color that we recognize in streetlights and lamp posts. Not much blue. The LEDs have this huge mountain of blue, and that's the issue. That's the issue with these types of LEDs. And I want to talk a little bit more about that. But it's readily apparent when you look at the, at that spectrum. So this is why blue matters. Every organism on the planet has evolved in a system where it's daytime and then it's night. It's light and then it's dark. Have evolved to a period where we have amber light at sunrise and sunset, and we get blue light throughout the day. We've evolved to respond to that. All organisms on the planet respond to this in some way. You've probably heard of it. It's called our circadian rhythm. I'm going to throw one big science term at you. I promise it's going to be the only one. There's something in your brain called the suprachiasmatic nucleus. It's a little tiny cluster that's in your brain. And it doesn't help you to see stuff. It just responds to light. And particularly when blue light hits it, it suppresses a bunch of hormones that would otherwise make you sleepy. You've probably seen melatonin you can take at the drugstore. This is one of the natural hormones your brain produces. Well, when you're in daylight, it suppresses that so that you can stay awake. And you do things like this. You, you have a waking state, high alertness, more coordination, that kind of stuff. And when it gets dark, the melatonin comes back up. So one of the things we've done to ourselves for the past century or so, especially with the advent of a lot of artificial light, is to get rid of the dark. Nighttime is supposed to be dark. So what we're talking about is if we, if in a big wave, we introduce all of these LEDs that have a bunch of blue light, we're going to put blue here where it doesn't belong. And that's going to do this. It's going to suppress melatonin. It's going to disrupt our sleep cycles. And this is the interesting part. There's a lot of studies that are coming out that link this to a lot of diseases, particularly if we suppress melatonin too much, and if we suppress it continuously at night and don't allow it to, to come up. On one end, there's a lot of studies that show that this messes with glucose levels and can induce diabetes. On the other end, there's actually a bunch of recent study that show correlation to breast cancer, of all things. So this is a public health concern. There was sort of a landmark study that the American Medical Association hit us with in 2016, where they looked at all of the current literature that's, that's out there on this stuff and issued guidance on how townships and states should, should look at LED lighting as we pan this out in the future. Basically, addressing this, this blue problem in LEDs. Mass state legislature picked this up. And over the past couple of years, this is actually an article from this year, from 2019. There are identical bills in the House and Senate pushing through to establish some laws in, in this area. It hits closer to home, though. You probably have a cellphone in your pocket right now that has this function on it. It's a night shift function. After 10:00 PM, takes the blue light out of your cellphone screen so it doesn't keep you up at night. Now, you can imagine that this, this has everything from messing up your sleep cycles all the way through to potential impacts on diseases for something as simple as just putting a light up there. But it's not just us. I didn't pick a bunch of cute creatures on here to pander to my audience, although some of these are cute. I picked these creatures on here because they represent areas where lengthy scientific studies have been done to show impacts on these animals. Lots more out there. These were some of the prominent ones that stuck out. But on here, we've got red fox. We've got springpeepers, loggerheads, and pollinators. Remember these? We don't see many of these anymore, right? You used to, I remember having gobs of fireflies in your backyard. And now, regular light pollution has them completely gone. Adding blue light to that will be completely, a completely different story. Estimates are, if we were to just convert everything over to, to blue LEDs, that the amount of light pollution alone could go up by an order of magnitude, by tenfold because of what I'm going to introduce. But there's a lot of impacts. We are, we're already suffering from, from what some describe as insect Armageddon, right? There's a lot of declining species in this stuff, and this would absolutely add to the problem. Another issue with really blue light is that blue light scatters the most. It bounces off of things. This is the main reason why the sky is blue. It's the blue light, when the sunlight comes through, that gets scattered the most and comes down into our eyeballs. But that happens on the pavement. It happens on, on roads, on building sides and everything. The blue light's going to scatter much more. And so you get an increase in the amount of glare, the amount of light trespass that's there. Here's a, a college student on campus. Now you see him. Now you don't. The college student is still there. Can you spot him? It took me 20 minutes to find him. He's actually right there, standing at the base of the light itself. Because the glare is putting so much light, it's overloading your, your eyeballs that you can't make out enough contrast to see the student. Here's one more example of that, where it's got a lot of glare. And again, the glare is light that's wasted. It's coming directly into your eyes as opposed to illuminating other things that you'd see. If you simply put your hand over the light so that it blocks the glare, you can see that there's somebody standing in the fence. So there have been a lot of studies that have looked at whether or not brighter, bluer lights are going to dissipate crime and things like this. And there's not a single study that shows that crime goes down if you make it brighter or if you make it bluer. In fact, there were a few studies that actually showed that crime goes up because you can't see the perpetrators because of glare. So it actually went the other way. This is something that hits close to home. I'm an amateur astronomer as well. And Southborough has some rather good dark skies. When the conditions are right, and you go out to one of our dark areas, like Chestnut Hill Farm, you can just make out the Milky Way. It's right within visual magnitude if it's dark enough and the atmosphere's just right. If we go blue LEDs, that's gone. So I want to be careful with that. This is a picture that I took at Chestnut Hill Farm. And it was relatively easy to take. But that's going to get very much difficult if it's blasted with blue light up into the atmosphere and all that stuff. It'll make, mean that we're going to lose part of our dark skies as well, in a large way. Here's another picture I took from my backyard. And I don't want to lose that. So there are easy solutions to this. I'm going to knock your sign over again. There's easy solutions to this. You've, if you've been to Lowe's, Home Depot, you've shopped for, for LED bulbs and that kind of stuff. On the back of these things, there's a light appearance scale. And you might have seen that. It has, has this, this unit called Kelvins, right? But you can get these in like warm LEDs or cool LEDs. One of the easy solutions is to pay attention to that. 6,000 Kelvin is very, very much in the blue. 2,700 is, is very warm. It's to just avoid these. And we get rid of that blue mountain that's at the beginning of the, of the spectrum. Some of the other easy solutions are just making sure that the light's going where we want it to. Some of the, the lamp posts we have in Southborough are beautiful, even in the back parking lot of this building. But they fall into this category, unfortunately. There are these beautiful globe lights that have the acorn tops and that kind of stuff. 50% of the light goes directly up into the atmosphere. It's completely wasted. Another 30% goes right into your eyeballs as glare. And whatever's left is what's illuminating the stuff at the bottom. So properly shielding these lights, as well as avoiding the blue, is the best thing we can do to reclaim dark skies, to make sure it doesn't get any worse, and to make sure that the impacts on the environment, wildlife, and for public health are dissipated as much as we can. There are easy solutions for retrofits. I think this is the exact model. It's actually in the parking lot in the back. Dark sky reflectors. You can retrofit these for about 60 bucks. You can put one of these on there. And it makes it full cutoff. And if we simply make sure that when we're rolling these over to LEDs, that we, we cut the blue out, we can make these as responsible as possible for moving forward. This is my favorite one. This is probably the highest tech we have right now for these nice lamp posts. Beautiful lamp post. It's a full cutoff, tunable LED luminary. And so the LED is in the top. It's full cutoff, so it's buried deeply in there. You can tune the LED. So you can tune the blue right out of it. And you can tune it to where maybe you want to issue maybe not 20, 2,000 Kelvin. 2,300 is maybe too warm. But you edge up to about 2,700, so everybody likes it. These things are, are great. So to finish up, what I'd like to recommend is establishing permitting requirements for full cutoff lighting and to make sure that we're less than 3,000 Kelvin on these. We're in the warm range for all the LEDs that are going in there. We avoid that blue mountain that's, that's there. And to ask for your support in town initiatives, I would assume that eventually we're going to be rolling over streetlights to do this. And any support in, in, in making sure that those go warm as well would be great. Support for retrofitting, to make sure that we can take what dark skies we have now and make them even darker by doing this. There's a lot of good examples. We don't need to reinvent the wheel. Gloucester is an excellent example. It's International Dark Sky Association compliant. Their ordinances, their bylaws, their code enforcements mean that stem to stern, they're doing this in a fantastic way. There are lots of local examples of poor implementation. We're not going to go naming towns. But that have hastily marched through this and introduced a lot of the low-hanging fruit, blue LEDs all over the place. And all of the complaints come with it. You saw how bright this thing is. Imagine it in every light in town. They roll in. So you can, you can scour the internet and find all kinds of wonderful complaints about that stuff. You'll get a lot of rural beauty. Tree City is also on the agenda tonight. These initiatives that we're sponsoring, Community Wildlife Habitat. This is going to help to support all of that stuff. Support for native plants because we're not going to be decimating pollinator populations by messing with their cycles. We can lower the costs. We can go green. We can protect the public health and wildlife and preserve those dark skies. So if you want to know more stuff, we're starting a Natural Sciences Club of Southborough. We're going to kick off on June 4th at 7:00 PM. I'm going to give a talk there on some of my astrophotography and stuff like that. Fun. We're doing Southborough Open Land Foundation Astronomy Night at Chestnut Hill Farm coming in the summer. So we're going to take a bunch of my telescopes out so we can take advantage of those dark skies. There's a lot of great conversations going on in the Native Gardens of Southborough Facebook group. My website is stellar solace dot com. You can see what I've done in Southborough dark skies. And then darksky.org is the International Dark Sky Association site. And they've got gobs of great information on how to do this responsibly and how not to do it responsibly. Thanks for your time.
I'll open it up to questions. I have one. When you, the 6,000 Kelvins, and you tone it down to the 2,700, is it, is the wattage? Remember you said earlier, what was it, a 60 watt goes down to nine?
Yeah.
Is that?
So your question is, does it affect the brightness?
You need a microphone. Sorry. Well, the energy savings.
Yeah, so, so the, the wattage can be decoupled from the color. So there are a whole slew of, of very high wattage blue, very high wattage warm. There's a whole slew of very low wattage blue and low wattage warm. And so there's all things to pick from. I'm not exactly sure about the tunability of that particular model that was there. But my guess is that the wattage stays the same. It just tunes the color. And the nice thing is, is that with, with respect to brightness, you can still have nice, bright lights, but they're warm instead of, instead of blue. So you get those choices in the LED. LEDs are remarkable technology. It's really flexible.
What you, you, I think we discussed a little of this tonight. The town, we actually, we just did it with the sign. The town has to, even though the town is the town, they, the town government, town entities have to still comply with the zoning and site plan, same as if you're a, a private, you know, proponent for a, an office building or something. So we just saw that with the sign for the public safety building. So one of the things, at one time, the town just did whatever it wanted. Never went through site plan. Just pretty much did whatever it wanted. And one of the things that changed that was the lights out in the back here. The planning board, when those lights were put in, the, when the planning board went a little bit sideways because we, we were, you know, pressuring developers to not use those type of lights.
Glad to hear that.
And there, and then we, we, we came here one day and there, there they were. And that and a few other things caused the, the planning board to huddle with, you know, the selectmen and say, alright, everyone's got to follow the rules. So that's, I agree with you. That's an example of how not to do it.
Yeah, yeah. And the good news is that, that, you know, if, if there's a mechanism in the future to retrofit those, it's, it's pretty simple to do. Pop the globe off and put this thing over top of it.
Are you afraid of climbing ladders?
No. Call me. I'd be happy to climb those ladders.
Mr. Jennings.
How, how does this apply to fluorescents?
So fluorescents, if, if you, if you looked at them through the spectroscope, which you, you can actually do, they have line spectra as well. So they, they, they're not broad spectrum. If we look at them, this actually has some pretty beautiful lines. And it's not, not too bad in blue, these ones. They're pretty warm. You can sort of tell looking at them, too. But you can see those lines. I teach my students how to take those lines and actually determine exactly which elements off the periodic table are in those. So there's actually gobs of information you can get from it. But these ones here aren't so bad. They're pretty warm, not too much blue. Fluorescents are certainly better in terms of the blue light than, you know, the bluest of the blue LEDs. And like everything, they're sort of a mix of the two. Ironically enough, the compact fluorescents that were phasing out because they're hard to recycle, were like this. They weren't actually that bad when it came to the spectra. But now that the LEDs are moving and enforced, there was just, at first, there was no attention paid to the, the spectra. But now they're starting to come around.
And what about TV screens?
It's all the same. So the LED screens that are on your, your phone, your iPad, your computer screen, the TVs, emit gobs of blue. And so this, this is a public health concern that goes way beyond town lighting. It's in our homes. If you put these LED bulbs in your house, you're messing with your circadian rhythms as well. You know, all the screen addiction that, that everybody's got now is, is a serious concern, which is why on a lot of the devices, laptops, and cellphones, you can tune that blue light out at a certain time of day. GE is actually selling light bulbs now where you can do that to a regular light bulb. You can tune the light out, set it to a certain time, and the light bulb takes the blue out at a certain time of night. But the, all of them do that. All the LED technologies have gobs of blue in them unless it's tuned out. So I, you know, you wouldn't want to watch a TV show if all the blue's gone and everything was just yellow. But it's just, you know, to, to pay more attention to that as, as nighttime comes around and to, you know, read a book instead of watching TV. Mimi?
No questions, but thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Anyone in, want to ask questions, comments?
Yes, go ahead. Turn it off.
So, thank you, Destin. I have a question for the planning board. Without having a bylaw change or, which, you know, maybe could be something in the future, is there a way within the current permitting you can start to implement this? I know you get to review the lighting and, or, I mean, is there some way, like as a condition, you can say no blue LED light at a certain level? Or is, or is this premature for what's in the bylaw right now? Because I know you do have some prerogative in your permitting. And because we just mentioned it on a permit you're going to be issuing, is there a way to start now? I'm not asking you to talk about that permit. I'm just asking if there's something in the bylaw that would allow you to start making these requirements.
Negotiation.
I think the answer's no. We can't, we can't, unless those words are in there. Unless the words are in there, proponents come in here with their lawyers, and we would, wouldn't have the teeth to enforce it. Which leads us to, now that we're partially educated in this, leads us to look into it deeper to see if we can adjust our lighting code and get those words in there.
But in the meantime, you could ask the question. I mean, you can always ask a proponent to comply with a certain...
Which we do.
Often, yes.
Which, which we do with light fixtures and hours of operation, open space.
So, thank you.
You need a mic.
Just one comment while he's on the way. So when we get all these 5G transmitters on every other lamp post and all the lights, we're cooking ourselves.
We're sending out all kinds of spectra everywhere.
Just a little learning for me. With all those things that you mentioned about blue light, isn't there any action by the government, local, state, or federal to kind of ban what you, you were talking about?
Yeah, so right now in the mass state legislature, there are identical bills moving through the House and the Senate. They seem to have a pretty good amount of support. I haven't read the most recent versions, but they, they address a lot of the broad brushstroke issues with this stuff, just general light pollution, that kind of thing, as well as LED technology. So they're moving through. I think that it's still going to be up to townships and to, to take action because I believe, I could be mistaken, that it's still, it's only going to hold a certain level of accountability down the chain. I think the, the towns are still going to have to decide to implement this kind of stuff.
Sir, could you just tell us who you are for the?
I'm Sid Blaga-Babian from Breckneck at Wood.
Thank you. Anyone else? Any questions, comments? Excellent. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Destin, is that PowerPoint something we can get a copy of? Or is that privileged?
So the next item on the agenda is the EDC proposed zoning amendment to the Business Village District.
Alright, let me just set this up real quick. Hold on.
Come on up. There's a sign-in sheet somewhere around. Been asked to have people sign in. It's not a hearing, but helps us with the minutes. So in a minute, I'll ask the town planner to give us the background on this discussion item. And welcome back.
Thank you.
Last fall, prior to town meeting approaching in the spring, the EDC asked the planning board to discuss potential bylaw change to the Business Village District, which is section 174-8.4, specifically Part B. And that was to incorporate item number eight, as you see on the screen, to include residential dwelling units, condos, or apartments, not to exceed a certain size. And also to talk about the permitted uses up to certain square footage, as allowed currently, 2,000 square feet. And at that time, we were starting to discuss the update of the 2008 master plan. After 10, 11 years, those are typically renewed. And in the discussions with the planning board, it's my understanding that there was a consensus that perhaps it would be best served to go through the master plan process to address this potential bylaw change. And the EDC is here to give us some feedback on a subcommittee's information. The EDC created a subcommittee specifically for the downtown area. And I believe you've met at least once, right? With the new committee recently. And so at the last meeting on April 8th, the planning board asked Mr. McKay to return and to provide some feedback on the status and, you know, the thoughts on that.
Julie, David, welcome back.
Thank you.
Thanks for being here. You're on.
Thank you, Karina. And, and thank you, Don, and to the committee for having us here. A, a couple of things. So we've been working on this downtown initiative for about a year and a half right now. And the, the short background is that this came from a lot of questions that we were receiving from town residents about ways that we might be able to improve downtown, specifically bringing in some small-scale, local businesses, restaurants, things like that. And we, and so we put out a survey and got a very positive response. 427 respondents very strongly in favor of, over 90% of the respondents said they supported restaurants. Over 67% said they supported small-scale retail. And 85% said they were also amenable to mixed-use development if it was done appropriately with appropriate parameters. So the two takeaways that we've had since we started looking into things that we might be able to do to make some small improvements to downtown are, one, that it has a lot of support from the residents. This is, this is what the residents want. And all of our actions since then have reinforced, we've gotten a lot of positive feedback. And the second takeaway that we've found out through all of our work and through bringing in the Urban Land Institute last spring is that the two major impediments to beginning the process are septic and zoning. Zoning is not a new issue. We've known for a long time that our zoning is antiquated. Our zoning does not currently allow for what we typically, in modern times, think of as mixed-use development, which is a, a retail or a commercial space on the bottom with residential units on the, the top. That's not currently discussed or contemplated in the, in the current zoning bylaw. So when this first, so this was, this was our first iteration at a, what we, what we thought would maybe be a simple way to, to fix that. We brought this before you guys back in the fall. And we're told, you know, it's, it's more complex than this. This is too oversimplified for going to change one. We can't just change one section without changing everything. So, so this was the first iteration. So after multiple discussions with Mimi, with Donnie, with, with, with this board, we haven't actually looked at this in about five months. We've since moved on. And we've had discussions with you about, instead of doing this, taking, going back to 2008 and then master plan, which specifically identified zoning as a major impediment to, to town improvement. As you know, from the, the 2008 master plan, the, the ZAC was born. There was an attempt to overhaul the entire zoning bylaw, which didn't pass town meeting. However, the portions of the overhauled bylaw, which pertains specifically to the business development districts, was, in its final form, was not controversial. So after this was, this, this attempt was rejected, we said, okay, well, let's go back to that because everybody seemed comfortable with that. And so we proposed and suggested that perhaps we work together with the planning board, planning board obviously having purview over the zoning bylaws, to try to bring that forward, to bring that piece forward now. And, and their response became the, the commencement of the master plan committee to instead go back and revise the 2008 master plan. The issue that we have as far as downtown zoning is, is very specific, mostly to, to the, the issue of mixed use, right? Mixed-use development opens opportunities for, for different types of development. It gives people who are looking to invest in downtown different avenues. However, the, the, as, as written in the proposed ZAC, it's not by any, by any means a blank check. This board has, has purview over every application that comes through. It's not a by right use. It just opens the avenue for opportunities. And, and the, the current version of the code does not allow for that. So this was identified in 2008. This was identified in the ZAC because that's the major part of what was changed in the ZAC of the current bylaw accounted for mixed-use development in, in the way that we currently understand it. And this was again identified in the ULI report that our committee commissioned last year in 2018. So I think we have a pretty good understanding of, of what the problem is. And my concern, getting this far along, having been discussing this with you guys since the fall, with now going back and moving this, you know, instead of taking this up now, putting it as part of the master plan, we brought this to the planning board because the EDC is not the right board to do zoning. We, we want to help with it, but, but... but, but you're, you're the ones charged with zoning, right? And we'll do whatever we can to, to help you, but in the end, this is, this is your bucket. And it's also not the bucket of the master planning committee. The master planning committee has a much higher level scope of what they're looking at. Zoning is a piece of that, but they're looking at the master plan for the town, and I completely support that. And I, I think that's wonderful that, that this process has been started. However, they're not going to write zoning. So, they're going to make recommendations, and they're going to, in 18 months, which is their projected timeline, come back to the planning board with their recommendations for zoning. And then, at that point, we'll be in the exact same position that we were in 2008 with recommendations. We know what those are because nothing in zoning has changed. Nothing downtown has changed. None of the facts or mitigating factors have changed since 2008. So, we know what the problem is. We know what the solutions are. And, and by stalling this, we're really just kicking the can down the road for three years. We're going to be back in the same position as we're, as we are right now. So, in my humble opinion, I think that moving this, making this a master plan committee issue is counterproductive and probably futile because it's going to come back with, there's, there are no facts that have changed that are going to make the result different than it was in 2008 as, as validated by the ULI report last year, which identified the same problems with zoning. So, we, we, we really want to work with you guys. We are prepared to do some drafting, to put the proposals together, to do the heavy lifting. Clarifying again, this is not the proposal that, in our view, is on the table right now. And we don't think we have, we don't think we have time to spare. Our mandate, you know, we started this project with the support of the town, of the residents. We started this project, the downtown initiative, with the support of the Board of Selectmen. We've identified the two major factors that are impediments to downtown development, and zoning is one of them. So, by saying that we can't look at zoning for probably realistically minimum two more years is just completely undercuts the work that our committee's trying to do. So, we're really hoping that you'll reconsider and try to work with us to move this along in a more expedited fashion.
Can I add two cents to that?
Absolutely.
So, I, I agree with, with what Julie said, and I think the, the consensus among, if not unanimity on our committee, is that this is an issue that's important enough to address now. My own view on it is that I think waiting is a, is a real mistake. And I think it's, it's a real lost opportunity for us. Julie's touched on some of it. I mean, I think we have waited 10 years already since the 2008 master plan came out, since 2012 with the ZAC proposal. I'm just speaking specific with respect to the downtown, waiting for someone, whether it's this board or another board, or some committee, to move forward with the downtown improvements that if you, you know, in looking at the, in the experience that I've had through the EDC, these are not controversial improvements from, from anything that I've heard. And similarly, in the master plan, you don't get the impression from the master plan that the kind of modest zoning improvements that they're talking about there were, you know, were, were not the product of a pretty broad consensus. So, we've been waiting for 10 years, and we haven't really, to, to me, the proof is in the pudding. And I think that's where, that, that's in my view why it would be such a mistake to wait. We've waited 10 years, and we haven't seen in the last 10 years the kinds of improvements that we were looking for in the downtown. In fact, some people might argue that it's gotten worse rather than gotten, getting better. And there's no reason to think that if we waited three years, we're going to be confronted with a situation in two years from now or three years from now that's markedly different than what we have now, at least from a zoning perspective. The road will look nicer, but we'll still have all the same kinds of impediments from a zoning perspective of getting the kinds of amenity improvements that, that folks tell us that they want to see downtown. The other thing that I'd add to this is that, you know, the, the EDC bringing this forward is not intended to be and should not be taken as an imposition by the EDC on any other board or committee. In my view, this is community development. This is not economic development, and this is something that we should all be working on together. This should not be an exercise where the EDC writes it and then brings it to the planning board and waits to see if the planning board thinks it's right or if changes need to be made. Same with the selectmen, same with the master plan committee. I mean, I think this should be an iterative process where folks from several different boards and committees are involved and are actively participating in what this written work product looks like at the end. I think it's going to be a better product if it's written with input from other boards and committees along the way, rather than just having the EDC try and repackage the downtown ZAC proposal or some variation of that. So, I think the process works better if this is everybody working on it together rather than sort of just either nothing happened and we wait for, for whatever comes out of the master plan process, or we just leave it to the EDC to write on their own and then to, to bring it forward to this board. I think it works a lot better if, if we're writing it together. And we start with a conversation of what we want to see in the zoning bylaw. And, you know, you can summarize the ZAC improvements in the downtown zoning in about five minutes. I don't know if those are the right things, you know? Is 1,800 square feet the right trigger for a special permit? Should it be more? Should it be less? Mixed use is allowed by right under, if you're under that threshold? It does some other things with regard to setbacks and so forth. These are kind of policy questions from zoning that I think make a lot more sense to talk about in the beginning rather than sending the EDC off to sort of write this and then bring it forward to you folks and say, oh, well, did you think about this? Why did you do it at, you know, 2,000 feet instead of 3,000? Whatever those kinds of issues are, I think are issues that are better discussed during the process rather than waiting until after the drafting has been done. The last point that I'll make is I think this is really important to do it now and not wait because of the economy. We're blessed with a tailwind right now in the economy, and nobody knows how long it's going to last. And it may last six months, it may last a year, it may last three years, it may last five years, it may last 10 years, who knows? But I think, you know, we have, we have had an economic tailwind for a while now. And, you know, if I'm a betting man, I'm, I'm not betting that at the end of, of a, a master plan process that we're going to have the same kind of benefits that we have from a lending perspective, from a developer perspective, from just there being money available for folks to do these kinds of improvements that we are in right now. And so, if we wait and, you know, the master plan's 2019 right now, it becomes 2021, 2022, if that looks like 2008, forget about it. Nobody's going to put a dime into the downtown for a really long time. And so, I think, you know, there's a lot of incentive and there's a lot of reason to, to do this, to do it thoughtfully and carefully, but to do it now and try and take advantage of, of some of the investments that we're making in downtown, both with regard to the Main Street project, but also, you know, just taking advantage of, of, of a favorable economy.
And I'll just add, it would also give us the opportunity to think about different things, perhaps even things like design guidelines for the downtown area, which may include, because I'm totally sold now on, on not blue lights. So, things like that that we can consider, so.
So, I, I think coming out of the last meeting, and Mr. Morris and I spoke, spoke earlier today, I mean, I, I, my hope is that there's a little bit of a reset. I know I had what felt like a fairly chilly reception to the idea of advancing this conversation now. I hope that you'll reconsider that because I think there's a lot of good reasons for us to be working together on a good, on a good bylaw for the downtown that gives us the kind of rural character but adds a little bit of vitality to the downtown that I think is going to, is going to be helpful to all of us. And, and I'll end on a personal note. I would love to be able to go downtown on a Saturday night and have options other than the South Borough House of Pizza, you know? I have nothing against the South Borough House of Pizza, but it would be nice to have a couple of restaurants downtown on a Saturday night where you could take your family. Or after a meeting like this, that you could go and, you know, have a beer with, you know, a couple of your colleagues. You know, we don't have those kinds of amenities downtown right now, except in, you know, with very limited choices. And what's surprising is, you talk to folks who run restaurants, they want more restaurants. You know, what gets restaurants going is having more choices and more, more options available. So, I do hope that you'll reconsider and, and you'll think about, think about working with us. We are happy to roll up our sleeves and do a fair amount of the drafting, but we think it works a lot better if we're all doing it together.
Thank you. Yes, I'll bounce off of, Dave and I had a telephone conversation this afternoon, and I think we left it in agreement that, as Julie said, that the EDC is willing to do the heavy lifting on this. One of the things that's, I think maybe the other board members will, might, may agree with me, is we keep talking about "it." You know, we have to do it now. So, we need to clearly define what the "it" is. We know that it would be a, a zoning change, but change from what to what? So, I think that starts with the EDC. You, you, your homework on this has been extensive. And if you're willing to do the heavy lifting, that first draft, it's similar to the way we, we deal with the other proponents in town within the government. For example, if the selectmen want a zoning matter addressed, they, they draft it, submit it to, submit it to the planning board through town council, and then the, the whole teamwork starts. But somebody has to start it. Somebody has to draft that first "it." So, that's the way I feel. And then, I, I agree with, with what you've said. We, we can do this now, and we have to do it. If, if there's a proposal that's submitted to the board from another town entity, in my opinion, the planning board, it's our job to, to look at it and, and either bring it forward with our support or bring it forward without our support. But I don't think the planning board has, is doing its job if we turn it, turn it away. If, if we turn the work of others away who want to make these revisions. And I, I just don't think that that's the way you'd be treated, or anyone would be treated. Whether, whether we agreed with it or not, we would still bring it forward. So, let me open it up to the rest of the board, and especially agree with Dave. Once, once that first step is taken, once that first draft is, is, is done, then we sit down as a team and we try to make it, we polish it. And we may get to a point, and Dave and I talked about this, where there may be, the concept of improving the downtown, everyone might be in agreement with that. But there may be some components of the change that we would never agree on. And I think the example I used was a six-story building, for example. Let's say the EDC came in and said, we, we need, there's, nothing's going to work unless we have at least six stories. And the planning board may say, absolutely not. That's a showstopper. We cannot support this if it has six stor, if it has a, an allowable use of six stories. So, there may be pieces within a great idea that we may, we may disagree on. And just see where that takes us, and that's, that's part of the process. Mr. Jenks?
Julie, I think you mentioned mixed use as being residential units on top of something else. Is, is that the only definition of mixed use?
I don't think so. I, I think that's, I think that's the, that's the clear hole that's missing in, in the current iteration of the bylaw. You know, I think in colloquial modern, in modern language, if, if you say mixed use, I, I believe that that's what people are thinking about, and that's, that's missing from what is currently allowed.
That being residential?
Residential with commercial, yeah.
In this document that you folks, I believe you, you folks put this together, it, it's curious that the changes don't even reference mixed use. There's no, I don't see a reference here to what you're trying to solve. And that's not a big issue because that's a couple of words. We can put that in. The, the, more of an issue is the background for that. If we say mixed use is residential over something else, how do you know, you, you don't know? How, how do you, how are you betting that that's something that is going to, what, what did you say somewhere I, I read, revitalize the downtown area? You left out, in my opinion, you left out, you got the two big items, although I'm, I'm iffy on the zoning, but the septic is clearly the big showstopper right now. But it also seems to me that you left out the fact that all of the property downtown is owned and used. So, you go ahead and change the zoning code to, to add some things, what happens? You wait for somebody to come along with a bundle of money and say, I'll buy your business and your, and your building because I want to be the first to put in a mixed use? I, I don't understand that piece.
Sure. And I think you have a couple of questions there, so I'll try to answer them. This one, the, the enumerated one through seven there comes from the zoning code. It comes from 174-8.4-sub-B, which is, and it, and above that, that I didn't copy on there, it does reference multiple uses in, in one building. So, this is the mixed-use section of the zoning code. The bold language is what we added to, to add that element we perceived to be missing. Again, this is not our current proposal. That was our original proposal. We came to you guys. You're the ones who are the experts on the zoning bylaw. You explained that, you know, this doesn't solve the problem. There needed to be a, a larger, more integrated effort, which is why we had some discussions about starting with the ZAC, not as taking that, boxing it up, putting it to town meeting, but starting that as a place that seemed to have, have garnered a, a pretty wide swath of support and wasn't very controversial, and updating it with, working collaboratively to update it with things that, you know, the committees both thought were important, including potentially things like design guidelines to make sure that we're maintaining the things that are important to South Borough in the downtown area, the historic and becalic feel of the town. So, I think that was your first question regarding how, you know, we understand absolutely there are limited options for space, but there are some. And, and the mixed use was recommended by the master plan. It was recommended by ULI, and it's something that is, that we're confident that residents are on board with. So, while there might not be many open, available blank slates right now, it will open avenues of opportunity in the future. Again, we're coming to you guys for zoning because that's your purview, and we're separately dealing with some of the other issues, including septic as well.
I, I felt strongly last time you were here that the master plan was the place to address this. I, I think I picked up a comment. You said the updated master plan won't address zoning?
No, I didn't say that.
You say that? Okay, thank you. I would make the comment for what it's worth, and it may be worth nothing, is you keep referring to the ZAC. You know the ZAC was not a success.
Absolutely.
And I'd certainly make the recommendation, use it because there's a lot of good stuff in it, but don't call it the ZAC because there's, there's some negativity about that. There's a bunch of people that didn't like the process, and, and I think you There's a bunch of people that didn't like the process, and, and, um, I think you can cherry pick out of that and get some good wording for changes you'd like to see. If, if I were, the, the present I'm giving you in all this is I'm getting off the board.
Thank you.
You're welcome. But I, I would, I would suggest that when you come up with items, even on an outline form, of what you feel should be in the zoning for the downtown village district, that you have some kind of explanation as to why that would be good. So far, we've had one experience, that I'm aware of, one experience downtown with mixed use, as you defined it. The developer got through it. It was messy, but, um, David, I'm sure you remember, not too awful long ago, the answer to that kind of problem was, get the zoning to board, board, board to vote on it and wait 20 days. No one appeals it, you got it. So, I know in looking at something like this, I'd like to see some of the reasoning. I'd, I'd like to know why, for instance, you talk about not exceed, uh, on re, describing the residential units, last item down here. You talk about, um, not exceeding some number of units. I assume you mean in a building. Oh, it does say in a building. I'd rather see something about limiting the size of the units.
And again, these are all things we're, we're open to discussing. We are, um, and this is why we think it's important, that it's a collaborative effort.
Okay.
And we are, we are open certainly to having parameters on it, and, you know, our vision is that, I don't, I don't think our vision is out of line with, with, with what most people's vision of the downtown is. We're not looking for a six-story apartment complex.
If you'd let me finish, I'd tell you that the reason I say that is to illustrate if, if you write some language for zoning, um, hopefully you'll have some reasoning to back it up. And, and you can't make it fast and hard, because nobody really knows the answer. But reasoning like, um, Sudbury did it, and it's worked well there, that, that's better than just, "This is what we think the downtown zoning needs," and with that I'll pass the line.
Hi. Um, first, I'd like to clear up some misinformation that was disseminated in an email sent by the EDC chair, Julie, today. It said, quote, "Six months ago, the EDC approached the planning board requesting simple amendments that would not change the planning board oversight of the downtown projects or the rural character of downtown, but would permit small-scale controlled mixed use to allow apartments or condos to share a building space with ground-level commercial Firstly, there is no such thing as a simple zoning amendment. Because of the wide-ranging implic- implications of a zoning change, the planning board always proceeds with caution to help assure that no unintended consequences occur from the change. Secondly, as we discussed today, this was the zoning amendment that came before us, and it doesn't address mixed use at all. It just adds, um, this number eight as a, an additional allowed use. And that is very broad, would allow apartments anywhere, would allow, you know, apartment building in the downtown. It did not, it just allows apartments as a use. It also includes residential dwellings, which is a very broad term, which means anything that anybody lives in would also be allowed. And also, it, the amendment wanted to increase the threshold for planning board review, meaning there would be less planning board oversight, less transparency. It proposed allowing larger developments to be approved outside the planning board hearing process. The second thing from the letter, it said, "The planning board had indicated that they are not willing to work with the EDC." And when you came in October with this, um, request of a zoning change, "I was appointed by the planning board to work with the EDC. The EDC was to get in touch with the town planner and let her know who on the EDC would be working with me. The EDC volunteer never materialized, and I never heard from the EDC after that." So, it wasn't the planning board not willing to work with the EDC. Subsequently, the planning board formed the master plan committee to update the 2008 master plan, and decided to take direction from the master plan committee. The best way to get a two-thirds majority at town meeting to pass a zoning bylaw is to have broad support going into town meeting. If the master plan committee's vision of downtown aligns with EDC, that is a huge advantage to being able to implement a zoning change. The master plan committee is made up of a member of nearly every town entity in Southborough. Support from the master plan committee would certainly be constitute broad-based. Also, there's no indication that a recommendation for downtown coming out of the master plan committee would take at least two years. We've already begun discussing it in broad terms, and I think it would be much sooner that we would know where the committee is leaning and what their vision for the downtown Also, if the planning board will not work with the EDC, why are we here in a joint meeting tonight? Also, I would like to point out that according to the ULI report, it says, "The primary barrier to the revitalization of the downtown is the lack of SEPTIC system capacity. In order to move forward in any meaningful way with redevelopment, the first step for the town is to form a sewer assessment technical committee." So, even if we get the zoning change, the SEPTIC is the number one issue, as quoted from the ULI report. So, I think it's disingenuous to say, "If the zoning changes, we're going to have restaurants in the downtown in mixed use."
So, to respond to a couple of your comments, um, regarding, regarding SEPTIC, we understand that that is one of the major impediments, if not the major impediment, but zoning is certainly another one of them. We haven't brought SEPTIC to this committee, because that's not your purview at this point. Um, zoning is something we could work with you on, so that's what we're bringing forward. We are separately working with, with experts. We're getting information from other towns. We are, um, full speed ahead on the SEPTIC issue, so we're doing two things at the same time. Um, that the two-year number that, that I, that I referenced a few times, that was based simply on the fact that, from, um, from what I've heard, that the timeline that the master plan committee has set forth is 18 months, which is, which is reasonable. I know that there's a lot of work for the master plan committee to do. I support that work completely, and, um, and 18 months doesn't sound unreasonable for that. However, that is not a zoning committee, it's the master plan committee. So, the master plan will bring their recommendations to, to this, to this board, and, um, and you'll start to determine what, what issues you're going to take up. I don't think it's unreasonable to suggest that it could be upwards of two years before zoning is, is addressed. I hope that's not, I hope that wouldn't be the case, but even to wait a shorter time, I don't believe is productive or necessary, because as I said earlier, we, I think we have all the information that we need to have about the state of zoning. We know it's antiquated. It was called out in two, in the 2008 master plan, that a, a revision was necessary. I know all, all the work that was done on the committee that was established for that, and, um, I, I don't see the need to wait. And by holding that up, it holds up the work that we're going to be able to do. There's not going to be new information that's uncovered that changes the fact that zoning needs to be updated. Our committee's current efforts are focused on the downtown, so that's why we're working on that. Um, again, we brought this to you, we are, we're, I'm not a zoning expert. We brought this to you as a proposal. The term mixed use is not used, but if, and I don't have the code in front of me, but I believe this, this is the section that deals with multiple uses in one building, so that's the code that is, the section of the code that's used as the mixed use code. So, I, I don't think we were doing anything disingenuous by bringing this. Again, getting into details of, while residential dwelling units are bit, or is too broad, that's, that's a, probably a fair criticism, and that's why we brought it to you, because you guys are the experts.
So, why, why haven't we been working on it since October?
So, what happened after that, my understanding, was that we, we talked about working together, but we were told by you, Mimi, multiple times that you didn't think that this was the right way to go.
I didn't think "this" was the right way to go.
Right.
I said, "An overlay was a better idea."
We came...
"I volunteered my time to work with your committee, and I never heard back from you, and then you send out a scathing email saying that the planning board will not work with the EDC."
We, we came...
So, may I respond to that? Because, um, coming out of the last meeting that I was here on, and that was added to the agenda of the planning board, with the understanding that this meeting was scheduled, and so this, so, so this issue was put on the agenda for the last meeting for a discussion, when none of the EDC members were notified. And it was pretty clear coming out of that discussion that the, the prevailing feeling under the, of the planning board was that the planning board was not going to take this issue up, and that it should go to the master plan committee. So, the idea that the planning board didn't want, didn't want to actively take up this issue, I think is borne out by the 45 minutes during which we discussed this when I was here before the board last time. That's not, at least in my view, intended to throw stones at anyone, but to simply point out the fact that the planning board, that what I took out of the meeting last time, and, and what, what I'm hoping will be a different outcome tonight, wanted to punt this issue to the master plan committee. And I think that's going to take a lot of time, that's going to engender delay, and I don't think it's necessary. But I'd like to address this too, because a couple of comments were made about this proposal. This, this was not the EDC's draft. As a matter of fact, I think this was recommended to us by one of the residents who came to an EDC meeting and said, "If you want to fix this problem with regard to the hotel motel issue, why don't you just add one additional line to this particular provision," which is what we did. And then recognizing the notion that, that scale was going to be an important consideration for us, and presumably for this board as well, that was why the language was added in there about not to exceed, recognizing that that was going to be an item for discussion. But the notion that, that...
That is what you brought.
Let, let me finish. The notion that this does not, that, that this proposal doesn't address mixed use is just wrong. It's just wrong from a legal perspective. Section 174-8C2 is the provision that allows for mixed uses, and it provides that an applicant can go to the ZBA and get a special permit to allow for mixed uses for, among those, those listing of uses. There were seven. The suggestion was, was to make it eight. I'd also, so, i- in that regard, this most certainly was intended to address the mixed use problem, and specifically, um, the issue that came up with respect to Mr. Bemis's project, which is the whole, which is part of the genesis for this, which is a project that, as far as I could tell, everybody liked, became a subject of criticism, because we never fixed the bylaw in the first instance to allow for the kinds of projects that, coming out of the master plan, we said we wanted in the downtown. I would also add that this proposal does absolutely nothing at all to limit planning board oversight of all of these projects. A mixed use would go to the ZBA, okay? This does not change the special permit requirements for the planning board at all. Anything over 2,000 square feet still has to go to the planning board for a special permit. And I don't think there's any big movement afoot to, to change that dramatically. So, so, the, I, I just want to point out that, from my perspective as a legal matter, this does not change planning board oversight at all, and it certainly wasn't intended to, to change, um, planning board oversight.
The proposal, the proposal was to increase the threshold.
If I could, uh, I want to, I'd like to jump in here, because what we're doing is, we're, we're going over, we're going over things that have, are in the past. What we need to focus on is what's the next step? And I believe that the next step should be, and I'll ask the board if they'll go along with this, the next step would be a draft bylaw for the downtown village business district. Create, the draft would be created by the EDC and submitted to the town planner. The town planner would then give that to the board. If the board decides, "We're not going to do anything with it." I'd like to, I'd like, I've already told you that if that happens, if, if a draft from the EDC, or your consultants, or anyone, gets submitted to the planning board for, for our review and, and, I guess, collaboration, I would support that. I would recommend to the board that we take this up. You've gone through, you've did, you did the heavy lifting, you did the drafting, you did all the work up to that point of a draft. Who are we to say, "Forget it. We're not going to deal with it." It's our job to deal with it, in my opinion. And so, I'm going to ask this board right now if they're in favor of that. And if they are, then you've got three planning board, current planning board members sending that message out. You go create the draft, submit it to the planning board, and then we start working on it together. Mr. Jenks.
I think that is exactly the way it should work.
Mrs. Latrell.
I can't instruct the EDC what to do, but I would say that, um, the master plan committee is discussing, um, their thoughts for the future of Southborough right now. We touched on the downtown area at our last meeting, and I wouldn't want to be drafting a zoning bylaw that wasn't, was not in align with the master plan committee's, uh, vision for the downtown. I think it would be counterproductive. I think if we all move forward together, and it's not going to take two years, as I said, we're already discussing it now, the two years was, the 18 months was the end of the, um, MAPC contract, when they come out with their vision statement. I would think we would have an idea of where the master plan committee is going on the downtown well before that.
So, I understand your concern about going in different directions, but there's also a possibility, I would think, that if the EDC came up with a, uh, revision, with revisions to the downtown, they did the research, they did the writing, they addressed the concerns that they're, uh, they consider important, and then they submit that. The planning board would look at it, and we would hope that the master plan committee would look at it. And if the master plan committee looked at it and said, "Gee, this is pretty good. They did the work for us." I think there's a possibility that that could happen. Would actually be a, a compliment, or a, a, I guess, a gift to the master plan committee to have somebody else address the downtown. So, I think that because there's, there's a, there's a possibility that they would come up with something that we would all like, maybe not 100%, but at least get us started in that direction, that we should, we should allow that to happen. And I would, I would expect the planning board to, um, accept the material, a draft, and look it over. As I talked to Dave, you know, it can't be, you know, a poorly rushed job with a lot of omissions and, and have, have... of omissions and, and have, have the board have to fix, fix something up that's highly deficient, but I don't think the EDC would do that. I think that they would do as much as they could with the, um, I keep saying you're not zoning experts, but I guess we're, we're, if we're the zoning experts, we need, we always need help, so. I, I would like to have us leave this meeting tonight with that roadmap, that the EDC, sooner, a little later, a lot later, whenever you want, you create the draft, you submit it to this board, and then the board will deal with it, will work on it, submit, submit it to the master plan committee, and see where that takes us. Mr. Wood.
I think that's pretty much what we were trying to do, is get some guidance from you. I personally, I got some mixed signals. After our February meeting, I sat at this table with the chairman, Mr. Jenks, and Mr. Mills, and you asked us to take over and, and run with this, and treat downtown like its own little town, if I remember correctly, the verbiage. And we thought that was a great idea, and we'd love to. I think what we were coming here for, we want guidance from you. We're, we're not zoning people, you are. You understand the laws better. We'll do the heavy lifting, but we just want help in the verbiage and, and working on it.
Heavy lifting is to submit the initial draft.
We, okay.
The first step is for you to make a submittal to the planning board.
Sounds good. And then, I just want to address one thing with, with Ms. Luttrell, I, where you said nobody in the EDC contacted you, I apologize, but I thought we had a meeting that you attended at the Country Kitchen, and that, if I remember correctly.
I attended the meeting.
And I thought, we left it where you were going to bring it back to planning to see if they were on board with it, so we could figure out whether we wanted to just waste, if it was spinning our wheels or, or moving forward. And that's, that's where I left it.
So, I attended the meeting just to see what was going on. I was never contacted with who I'd been working for.
I thought that was after you were already a representative, so I apologize.
I want to keep the, the meeting, I want to keep this part of the meeting moving toward the future, toward what we're going to do. There's obviously not a lot of agreement on what's happened in the past, or why, but let's, uh, let's focus on moving forward.
Can I?
Mrs. Bartolini.
Kathy.
I just wanted to, um, answer Phil's concerns about other issues. Um, the, the fact that zoning isn't the only thing for downtown, you're absolutely right. And we've said that as well. Um, the, we are not ignoring by any means the issue of the sewage problems in the downtown. And, um, Paul Pazinski with the Board of Health has been working with us. Um, we're looking at communities of a similar size, geology, things like that, that we know, through my prior work, I know about some alternative systems that are being used than the more traditional kind of stuff, and he knew about it. And lucky for me, some of my employees now work in that community, so the doors have been opened to us. I mean, I, I have the accounting right down to the penny of how much it costs to put this system in, and it's being run by the private sector. The businesses in the downtown did it, not the town of. Um, so, we're working on things like that. We also have to look at the involvement of the property owners, as you pointed out, that, yeah, all the land is owned by somebody, and that's pretty basic, but who are they? And they're not necess, the people who own the land do not necessarily own the businesses that are on top of that land. Um, so, we've been meeting with these people, trying to talk to them and, and ascertain how much they really want to be involved in this. We don't need to spin our wheels if after we do it, eh. So, we're looking at trying to reestablish something similar, now, we don't know exactly what format it's going to take, uh, to the downtown, South Row Downtown Business Association that successfully worked in the, in the eighties, that was just terrific. Um, and there, as I say, if we could just get going and keep, you know, when I say I'm going to come back and talk to you, I can come back and, and not be tied up with, with discussions on other issues, but they're willing. And we've also are talking and have, um, a member of our committee that is very involved with this kind of work, is marketing campaigns, to bring in proponents for the, for the development. What we need to show them is that we're doing positive actions to remedy the problems. We're not, you know, just thinking we're, we're offering them, we're not. So, if we can, and we can get these people in now because of that, that connection. So, we're working on what in my trade is called the organization, the design, the marketing, and the economic restructuring. So, it's not just zoning. And I just want people to realize it's a comprehensive approach that we're trying to take to this. Thank you. Oh, one other thing, I'm on the, on the committee, uh, the, the master plan committee, so if the, the chair's desire goes forth that we start working, we being the EDC, working on a first draft, an underlying first draft, and put it in capitals, maybe, um, something else with glitter or something, but first, and at the same time, I can be taking that to the master plan committee for their input.
A lot of what, uh, when the planning board moves a warrant, a zoning article forward, the, the way that we usually get that language is to copy it from other towns. We did the solar, the solar section of the code recently, and we got help from the industry, but we also got help from other towns who recently enacted a solar bylaw for the solar panels. And then, you know, we made it, we got rid of sections that would appro, would appeal, apply to certain other towns, but not apply to, uh, South Row, and then we would add little pieces that we thought was important. And that's really, uh, how we do it, for the most part. We see how other towns have done it. I mean, the Tree City thing was a, uh, the tree bylaw was taken from several towns and put together. So, I would encourage you to, don't have to reinvent the wheel, see how, look at, look at the towns that you think is, where it's successful, read what they have, and then just copy it. It's public. Hi, Chris.
Chris Robbins, thirty-nine, Parkerville Road. Well, I can't thank this board enough for your insight and your input, because it gives us a perspective and a guidance of where we need to go. I think the notion, the word is, that's got to be continually emphasized, is collaboration and how well we work together. And I think Kathy mentioned about her prior experience, uh, working on the master plan and getting some insight, so when we come forward, that it's just not something you're going to kick back and keep kicking back because we didn't do it right. What we really need, now, I can't speak to the issues of why we didn't get together, but the reality is, if we're not getting together ahead of time before we come to the meeting, it's not going to be productive. It's going to be pointing the finger at what's not right. And that's where we've got to stop here. We have a town that needs to work together in a collaborative way, offline, what's going to be the right kind of zoning? So, when we come here, we're going in as a team. And I just want to mention that, um, people have said, "If it goes under the umbrella of the master plan, it'll go through a lot easier, quicker, not quicker, but, well, we just have to wait because we can't get it otherwise." We have several examples in this town, I think of the police and safety building, or in fire. They got twenty-three million dollars on the first round and before town meeting, because they worked together in an unprecedented way to get the votes that needed to make this happen. And we, as a committee, have lessons to learn from the failure of that ZAC. We didn't work together, we didn't do it the right way, and this is the example of an opportunity to set the stage of how we're going to work in a way that demonstrates to the community and to the other towns around us, to developers and residents, we know how to fulfill the goals that were set for the prior master plan and do it expeditiously, expeditiously, and as a team. So, I think we have the, the talent here to do it, and, um, I'm looking forward to seeing the next round move forward.
Yes, Dave.
Mr. Chairman, if I may, thank you. Um, I want to build off of a couple of the things that Chris said, because I, I think they're really important, and, and I feel like, um, if, if, it's the will of this board that you send the EDC off to write this thing, and then we bring it forward to you, we'll do that, because we're committed to this, this project and this undertaking. I will admit to you that I think that's a mistake. I think that's a flawed process. I think that's the, that, that is one of the big failures of the ZAC process, that the, the, the ZAC proposal was drafted, it was written, it was dropped in the planning board's desk, and nothing has really happened with it since then, in part because the people that were involved in drafting it the most were not involved in the process any longer. It was just, it was just brought to this board, and in fairness to you, it was a big thing to try and bite off, if you did it in, 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 you know, the whole thing, or even if you tried to, to break it down into pieces. So, I get it that that was a difficult assignment. But I think just sending the EDC off to write this thing without, um, the involvement of the planning board along the way is a mistake, because then the planning board has no ownership in the, the product. You're just receiving a product as if Dave McKay went off by himself, and I wrote a zoning bylaw, and I said, "Oh, I think this is going to be my citizen's petition, this is what, this is what the zoning should be for the downtown." I think this works a lot better, as Chris sort of mentioned, if we're working on this together, um, and that if you're a partner with us in writing this, my suggested, um, process for this is, we put together an outline of the substance of the bylaw, not writing the text of the bylaw, but what should be some of the different triggers? What should the setbacks be? What should the allowed uses be? What should the special permit uses be? What should be the trigger for a, a special permit use? That's the policy questions, which you can probably summarize in a page, and maybe it looks exactly what, like what the ZAC had proposed, or maybe it's something a little bit different. But we bring that forward to you folks, and then we have a conversation about that. And we put it on, we do make it a joint agenda item every month until we're done with it. And we'll do the first sort of piece of coming up with the outline, which is the policy stuff, and then we have a discussion about what, what policy makes sense. The rest of the drafting, I think, is pretty easy. I hesitate to say that. But I think, I think we can do the mechanics of it if we know what the policy is. And we haven't even had the policy question yet, as to, is two thousand feet the right number, should be more, should it be less, should we have more allowed uses, less allowed uses? Should, you know, what, should we have a set of strict design criteria that maybe allow for some more, um, by right uses if you're willing to go through this, the, the site plan process, subject to planning board oversight? I mean, those kinds of policy questions about what works best, I think it's, that's an important conversation to have, and I don't think you should be having that conversation after the EDC has written the whole thing. I think that needs to happen at the front end, so we, we have a much better sense of, of what we're writing. And so, I think that's a much, that, that's a better process for us to be moving. I know that requires a little bit more involvement from you folks along the way, um, but I think that makes for a better process. And we're willing to do a lot of the heavy lifting here, but I think coming up, getting feedback from the planning board along the way of what should be in there would be really helpful.
What I'm hearing is you're going to make a first draft submittal.
With you.
We will be here twenty-four-seven to receive it. We will receive whatever you give us. If it's unmanageable, we'll tell you, and we'll tell you why, and return it to you for more information. I don't think you'll do that. I think whatever your submittal will be will have value, and it'll be a launching pad for us to take it to the next step.
I think that's a mistake, Mr. Chairman, but we'll, if, if we got to do all the work, we'll do all the work.
It's not all the work, but it's the initial work.
Mr. Morris, I just want to clarify, I believe you said in the beginning that, you know, i- if, if we, if we were to do the work and take it to your board for review, you might like it, you might not like it, but you feel like it's your obligation to, to bring it forward.
Yes.
Town meeting, whether or not you support it.
Yes.
So, you might bring it to town meeting and say, "We don't support it, but this, this is, this is the product that's been given to us, we don't support it, or we don't support this section of it, or, or we do support it, hopefully." But you, you are committed to bringing it forward to town meeting once we have a product that is ready.
Yes.
Thank you.
I am, I'm one vote. But yes, I would encourage, as a chair, I would encourage the board to do that.
Thank you.
But only after we've, we've worked together and gotten to, and got to a point where we're just in different directions, and we would still bring it forward. But would, I think the planning board would prefer to bring something forward that we're all in agreement with.
That'd be our preference as well.
Good. Need to go to the microphone, Chris.
Don, Chris Robbins, what you just said, working together, you nailed the magic words. We're not coming back to give a, get a report card. We're coming back for high-value, interactive collaboration to create a document that's going to be presented as a group of one, unless there's obviously strong dissension about what's in that. But if we don't go forward as a team in this community, we're going to hit the same wall as the ZAC did. So, in that spirit, I applaud those words, and I know this group, in this room, we've got some of the smartest people in this town, and it's time we get the highest A-plus grade on how we work together to bring the best to our community. And I thank you for saying that, Don.
I hate to bring up the ZAC, but I was the co-chair, along with Dana Cunningham, for four and a half years. So, you had two planning board members on that ZAC committee.
You got me.
We had Kathy.
After the ZAC.
It was, in my opinion, it was not a failure. The timing was, it's, it's a hundred and ten-page document, it's different than what we have. The reason it didn't go forward, one of the reasons was that it was a huge pill to swallow. It's hard to take a hundred and ten pages of new formatting, some new text, some deleted, some added, and compare it to the hundred and thirteen pages of our, of our code at the time. It was hard to compare, and that's what the people wanted. They wanted to be able to compare what we have now to what was being proposed. At the same time, the planning board, I thought, was a very strong board, but the planning department was not functioning very well. And that got changed, but it coincided in time with the twelve public hearings that we had on the ZAC document. And it, the board, in my opinion, uh, we were, um, I wouldn't say crippled, but we were certainly not at full speed in our ability to present it. And it, it, it wound up on the shelf. Eighty-five meetings, twelve public hearings on the ZAC. It's not a failure, it's just, it has some value, and, um, a lot of people worked a long time and hard on it. If you read it, you'll see that it does have value, but it's just hard to, it's hard to get it in pieces, because we reformatted it, it's hard to, uh, take sections out of it because they, they cross over into, into other sections. That's in the past, the document still exists, still has value, and, um, I'm glad to hear that people are referring to it, but, um, can't, can't agree that it, it was a failure. to it, but can't, can't agree that it, it was a failure. It just wasn't a success, yet. So, it's getting late. If there's nothing more, then let's make it crystal clear that we, the planning board will receive a submittal from somebody for the Business Village District Downtown. And the planning board is committed to taking that and beginning the process of working together from there on.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Morris.
Okay.
Thank you, folks.
Thank you. Next item on the agenda is the master plan update. Ask the town planner to give us an update on this discussion item.
Quickly, I just want to point out that the master plan committee met on April 24th, 7:30 PM at the Senior Center. The agenda up on the screen has some red line notes on it about items that were discussed. One of the big things that happened at that meeting was that the committee agreed to move forward with the Phase One proposal work by MAPC. So that contract was, that proposal was executed and MAPC indicated that they'd be giving us an official contract for the planning department to sign to move forward to start working on the master plan update, Phase One. So that's a good thing. Also, part of the meeting, let me just get to it right here so I can remember. And Mimi, you might want to describe more of the specifics of some of the topics that were discussed at the master plan committee meeting, recommendation, status summary. So every few weeks when the master plan committee meets, several of the members produce documents to build on a working set of information and the one that was at the, at the April 24th meeting was, the goal was to identify, and you can correct me if I'm wrong, a lot of the implementation goals that were originally in the 2008, what was needed and what was no longer going to be a goal, kind of refining all the implementation goals. So it's really tiny to read, but it's so much information there and it's available, if you want to come look at it, at the planning department. We keep the documents from the planning, from the master plan committee there for anyone to come see and it's also posted on the website. What else do I have here? Let me just look. Things such as flow charts that help keep the group organized and moving in the right path of the goals that they're setting so that the plan can be expedited in a quicker timeframe if possible. And the last thing is, I think that's it. Mimi, do you have anything to add?
Um, thank you.
You're welcome.
Yes, I stole your idea of adding more in-depth discussion items onto the agenda, so I thank you for that. So we did have a long discussion with Ralph Willemir, Willemir, Wilmer?
Yes.
From MAPC. He gave a, a brief overview of the proposal and took questions from the committee and that was very productive and we concluded with voting to move forward with that process. And then we started the, the flow chart that was up there, the, the Southborough 2030 had the committee members think about what they would like Southborough to look like in 10 years. From there, we got some major areas the committee said that they would like to see for the future. And the, the six main areas were diversity of housing, diversity of commercial activity on Route Nine, the downtown and the villages, accessibility for pedestrians, cyclists, trails, sidewalks, developing a sense of community, a community center, pocket parks, the protection of historic assets, both landscapes and property, and the protection of open space. So those are the six areas that we whittled it down to, to focus on. And then the next meeting, we hope to drill into each of those areas and what actually that, that means. What does the diversity of housing mean and what implementation items that address that from the mass, the last master plan would still be relevant today? That's it. Oh, and the next meeting's May 15th.
That's correct, at the Senior Center, at 7:30, May 16th. We've already booked the room.
Anybody with any questions or comments? Next item on the agenda, 144, 154 Turnpike Road, site plan non-compliance. Ask the town planner to give us the latest on this.
At the last planning board meeting on April 8th, it was my understanding that the planning board had a consensus that their official stance was that the site should be returned to its compliant status of what was approved in the site plans. I conveyed that information to the building commissioner, who's been corresponding with the owner of 144 and 154, Mr. De Petri. And there was a little bit of confusion, but ultimately she indicated to him that he should block off the driveway connection with the Jersey barriers at this time as opposed to aligning them in the parking lot of 144 as he moves forward with his modification applications. He did, he and his assistant met with me and are working on a submission to the planning department by May 9th in order to be on the June 3rd planning board meeting to have public hearings for modifications to the two site plans. And depending on what he submits for his approach, at least the driveway will be blocked off with the Jersey barrier in the interim. And I believe that's, he was going to do that this week. He was going to change the Jersey barriers from the parking lot and block off the driveway connection. But the building commissioner did let him know, through my information to her, that the, that the planning board's official stint was that, stance was that that should be blocked off until such time as the appropriate process was taken, which is a modification to each site plan. So we'll wait to see this week. He's, the, the property owner has been responsive in trying to move forward and act appropriately from what he's being asked. And the building commissioner's on top of it as well, so we're, we're, we're not letting it slide off the radar.
Thank you. Yeah, I drove, drove down there last week or the week before in my Jeep and I was able to drive right between two Jersey barriers, turn around, and I could have fit the car through sideways through another opening in the Jersey barriers. So it was a, it was, at least the time that I was there, it was ineffective. And I know there was one other planning board member that drove through them also. Open up to the board and then we'll, we'll open up to the neighbors. Mr. Janks?
I have, I have a question, if anyone knows the answer. In our minutes of the meeting where we discussed that, one of our planning board members had expressed the opinion that the owner should go back to the approved site plan and if he doesn't, should continue to make payments of the fines for violating that. And I'm just wondering if, if he is required to make payments. Now, I know with a lot of building commissioners, they, if the owner is working on correcting the plan or correcting what, what they've done wrong, the, they waive the fine. And I'm just wondering if we know if that's been done here.
To the best of my knowledge, the notice of violation indicated that he had 30 days to respond, which he did, to the building commissioner and in doing so showed forward movement to mitigate the problem, A with his suggestion for Jersey barriers in the parking area in order to help reduce parking on Breakneck Hill Road and then also his commitment to submit applications for modifications as requested. And the building commissioner indicated that she would extend it another 30 days as long as forward motion is happening and it doesn't take too long. And as far as I know, there is no financial penalty yet being instated because of this 30-day plus the 30, as long as there's forward motion.
Yeah, that's a very common practice. I also went over twice in the last, week before last, and I went on a Wednesday, late morning, and I also went on a Friday afternoon. Both times, there were several parking spaces open in both of the lots. I'm of the opinion that he should, if it is accurate that he's not using the underground parking that's, that was approved and is part of that building, he should be doing that as a remedy, even if it's just employees and, because maybe someone running into Starbucks isn't going to go park underground. But that, the approved parking ought to be used before he's looking for sharing parking between the buildings.
Mrs. Latrell?
I have nothing to add. I agree with the building commissioner that the site should be brought into compliance while we await the modification of the site plan and I look forward to seeing that.
Anyone from the public? Neighbors? An update? Sure, you just got to get a microphone. You have a better ability to keep an eye on what, what the impact has been than we do.
Yeah, because, my name is Caroline Agabian. Actually, my house, our house, is very right the back of that shopping. What he did, he opened up, literally, the people can walk to our property. That's how close it is. And the thing that I really, I would like to address to you, the chair, the, the chair and also the committee, I have missed the, the last meetings because I was out of the country, but the point, the issue for me is the first question for me was according to the law, he did do against law, that he was not allowed to do that. The discussion further, it doesn't make sense for me because during the time that when he was putting the barriers there, middle of the night, and I have problem, a health issue, and the reason why I live in Southborough, because I want, living in a small community to have a comfortable life, middle of the night, I had to wake up and I couldn't go back because he was putting the barriers right there. And the company who was doing it is making so much noise that I had to get up and I couldn't go back to sleep and I had to take medications. The other thing is that our house is right on the corner. We, our kids are grown up, we are going to downsize, but the future, on that Breakneck Hill, on Mount Vicary, there is a new development going on, which is 11 houses. People like us are not going to buy it. People are buying with the children. Already, the traffic is horrendous, especially my, our house, which is on the corner. These people are coming, they're going so fast that many times I had to stop my car and ask the gentleman to slow down. The other issue we have had, which I have never brought that to the town or police officer, these people walk on our street. At lunch hour, they come out, they go for a walk, they put their Coke bottles, their, whatever they eat, they throw at our properties. Breakneck Hill Road is a very narrow road, even walking, just walking, it's narrow, it's dangerous, yet alone if we increase the traffic on that Breakneck Hill Road. The other thing is that majority of the people who are moving to Breakneck Hill Road are families now with children. Right across from that shopping center, there is a family with several kids. Right across from the other side, there is a nursing childcare center. And these are, people are going back and forth, back and forth. Because of his convenience in order to sell that to his tenants, all he is trying to do, the justification he has is the parking. He has allowance to do this, down, down underneath parking, the basement parking, whatever he has. So people are going, they're doing the shortcut in order to avoid the traffic, like from the, where the Walgreens traffic, like is to turn around. That's not fair to us. This is a neighborhood. We are there with our families and we come here to rest. Already, the traffic is horrendous. Imagine if we add that to the, to the area, you know, to the Breakneck Hill Road. We have Breakneck Hill Road and we have Mount Vicary. Already, it's a narrow road. We have families moving in, there's a new development that's going on with the 11 houses. Eventually, there will be families living there. The new people who are moving, actually, my neighbor is right next door, have two kids. Before, there was an older lady that was living there. So it's going to affect families and this is very important. I am, I might downsize, I move out of there, sell my house and move out. I don't need a big house. But what about the future of that neighborhood? It's a beautiful neighborhood. I've lived all over the world. I've lived in Middle East, Europe and United States. This is the best neighborhood we've ever had and we shouldn't lose that. Absolutely, we shouldn't lose that. That's what I'm saying. Thank you for hearing.
Thank you. Yes, ma'am.
I'm Mary Jane Giacconi on Breakneck Hill Road. I have been down there also in the past week and what I have noticed is that people from, I've seen two people park in there and then go to the office buildings. So it's not necessarily the restaurants and Starbucks and everything, but there are other people going in there now too, probably because at the end of the day, when they get out of work, they can come out onto Breakneck Hill Road and turn left on Route Nine. And I get that, but it doesn't justify the extra traffic on Breakneck Hill Road or his need for extra parking spaces for the restaurants and things like that. And that's all.
Thank you. Anyone else? So we'll continue to put this on the agenda, keep an eye on it and see where, wait for the application for a modification, at which time there'll be a public hearing, you'll all be notified if you're within a certain distance. And then we'll go through the public hearing process and see where that takes us. And then we'll go through the public hearing process and see where that takes us. Anything else? Great, thank you. Next item on the agenda is Tree City USA program. Well, ask the Tree City coordinator for Southborough, who's also the town planner, to update us on Tree City discussion.
All right. I have some kind, some kind of laser's hitting me in the eye right here. I'm getting like a blind spot. Can you see anything? Is it anything? I think it is, I think it is. I got like a silk, like a, something sparkling on this whole side. Okay. So a lot has come about. Do you like that one? Or this one? See that one?
That shows the tree.
This one, yes. So a lot has happened in the past couple of weeks. As you may recall, Arbor Day was proclaimed by the Board of Selectmen for Friday, April twenty-sixth, this past Friday. And in a collaborative effort between the DPW, Dawn, Kate, me, Shrubs and Trees on Route Nine, Joe Hubley as part of the Historic Commission, and a few other people were able to get a tree planted right outside the Historical Committee Museum, of the Historical Museum, right at Saint Mark's at the back driveway of the townhouse. And you'll see on the screen, that's the picture. We had Metro West Daily News come and write an article, which they did, took a picture, which you see. MySouthborough.com, the blog, provided information that it was going to take place. We own the town website, I can show you that too. Can see here that we had a news and announcements on the planning board website for Arbor Day in support of Tree City USA for the town of Southborough. And then we also, on the main website, had the banner that indicates that people can participate in the tree planting program with an online form. So you can either volunteer to plant a tree on your own property with some guidance provided by the tree warden and the DPW in order to make sure it's not conflicting with underground utilities, overhead wires, or line of sight. Or you can donate to the tree planting program. And you can find that online at the website, through planning or through the main website. So you can see, a lot happened. It was a really good day, and we hope to have more of this happen in the future. And this Arbor Day tree planting was part of the four criteria that we need to apply for Tree City USA. So we've met all the four criteria, I believe, and we'll be applying to that by the end of the year so that we can have our designation as a Tree City USA community. And that's every year. Once a year, you have to apply. And it's usually that timeframe towards the end of the year.
Any questions or comments on Tree City? Mrs. Latrell?
Thank you, Karina. It was a nice feel-good event. Couldn't attend, I had to work. And I know it was thrown together at the last meeting. I would hope, moving forward in the coming years when we have events, that there'll be more advanced notice to the board. And unfortunately, the tree that was planted is a non-native, so that's, it's a cultivar, which is a non-native. And, because we've been pushing natives so hard for developers, it's, it doesn't bode well that we're planting non-natives.
Oh, well, my apologies. It was my understanding that it was a native species, because that was asked. We, I don't, I'm not an expert in it, so I wasn't sure how to double-check it. But the folks from Shrubs and Trees, which I just want to give a little plug to, because they did donate this five-year-old tree, which is a, the name of it is a October Glory Maple.
Yeah, the fancy names are cultivars. It was cultivated in nineteen sixty-one in New Jersey. It's not a native. So evidently, there's more education needed also to our local nurseries.
Yeah, that's a good point. But we do appreciate the Garcias for, for making an attempt to participate, and I will know going forward, be a little more conscientious exactly, probably educate myself a little better on the tree species. So we'll work on that. But at least we got a tree there, and it's a start to something. We can adjust and refine and get better at it, but at least we're starting and taking hold, so.
Yeah, and that's why we'll be submitting the application months from now, because hopefully between now and the deadline, which is in December, many more trees will be planted and we'll have a better understanding of what native trees we can get. Any other questions or comments? Next item on the agenda is site plan procedures, construction phase. Karina?
I just want to point out too, that when I asked about the tree at the nursery, he said it's green in the spring and red in the fall. And I accepted that. All right, for site plan procedures, construction phase, this is an item we're keeping on the agenda so that it doesn't drop off until we can address it in greater detail. So I'm hoping, unless Mimi, you have something to add at this point, we haven't done any further research on that at this time.
Is that something you want me to look into?
It's something that you had brought up, and we were gonna kind of get together on it, but a lot of things have come, taken a priority on that.
Oh, okay.
So it's there, and we'll, we'll get to it, and I'll reach out to you and, or when you have a chance, you can do, reach out to me. We'll get to it.
Or we could assign that to any, any new member of the planning board.
My hazing is almost over.
Well, your plate's pretty full there, Mimi. Next item on the agenda, business administrator one for the planning department. As many of us know, Karina has been managing the planning department all by herself since We've been advertising for, to fill the position, received applications, and I'll let the town planner take it from there.
A few weeks ago, Phil Jenks and I and Melissa Danz of the Conservation Agent went through round one of interviews with five or six candidates. Then we whittled it down to two who we knew could do the job, and then had to determine which one would lead that duo to fill that position. And the candidate that we selected happens to have a couple of years of planning experience, working for two different planning boards at the same time, planning departments. So she's very familiar. So we, I put together an outline for an offer. I distributed her background information to the planning board members for review. And on Friday, we did her background check, we did her reference checks. Her reference checks came back very good, and she accepted the terms and is hoping to start May twentieth. She, I'm hoping that the planning board will appoint her this evening so that I can prepare an official offer letter that Dawn can sign, and I can submit that to her tomorrow or the next day so that she can take the steps she needs to, to give a professional notice where she is right now. And then again, we'll start May twentieth.
Any questions or comments?
Yay. Yes. I'd like to also point out that she has a community and environmental planning degree and is eager to participate in not only the administrative functions of the office and the budget type issues, but also planning projects, like the master plan or shop see or
Open space.
Open space and anything like that. So we'll get her up to speed on native species trees right away. I do. I just want to point out that she has not notified her current employer yet till she receives her official letter, just so you know, but I have it here. Oh, yes. Here.
At the bottom of the, it's on the agenda item, Phil. Says business administrator.
Right here. I can give this to you right here.
Business administrator for planning.
Business administrator one for the planning department.
Okay.
For planning.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that the planning board approve
Appointment.
Making a formal offer and appointment to the candidate who has been identified as the best for the job. The job being business administrator one for the planning department. And more information to be released when we're further in the process.
Second.
Motion's been made in second. Any discussion? All in favor? Very good. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Jenks. Do you want to give that back? Next item on the agenda, were we done with that one? Okay, next item is other business, properly before the board, planners report.
This evening, I have nothing to add with the planners' report, but we do have meeting minutes.
Next item on the agenda is approval of the meeting minutes from April eighth, two thousand nineteen. Mr. Jenks?
Mr. Chairman, Mr. Chairman, I move that we approve the planning board meeting minutes for April eighth, two thousand nineteen.
Second.
Motion's been made in second. Any discussion? All in favor? Minutes are approved. Next item on the agenda is our next meeting, is May thirteenth, two thousand nineteen. Anything else? Mr. Jenks?
Mr. Chairman, I move we adjourn.
Second.
Motion's been made in second. Any discussion? Hearing done, all in favor? We're adjourned.